Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, October 16. I hereby call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I'd ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda tonight, I also did want to take just a brief moment of silence to reflect upon and remember the victims of the Hamas terror attacks in Israel last week, as well as the civilian casualties that have been experienced since then in the Middle East. So if people could please take a moment. Thank you, everyone. Item number three on our agenda is attendance. I see all my colleagues are present and in studio today, as well as Town Administrator Mayo. Town Council Mullen is at Lynn Fields Town Meeting tonight, so hopefully we don't have any hardcore legal questions for the evening. Item four is public engagement. I'm actually going to pause on that one for a moment and skip over to item five, which is a set of public hearings. I'd like to first ask for a motion to open the public hearing for the transfer of stock for KVP Incorporated DBA Jeffries Liquors.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? No. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the hearing is now open. Ms. Dalton, my understanding is that we had a request to continue this hearing?
Yes, that is correct.
Great. And is the party on and wants to say anything, or are we just continuing?
We're just going to continue.
Okay, great. So I'd ask a motion to continue the hearing to November, sorry, November 13th, that's correct, November 13th at 7:03 PM.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So hearing is continued until November 13th. Our next hearing is scheduled for 7:15, so we'll come back to that. And Sheri, do we have any members of the public here for public engagement?
Yeah, yes, we do. We have John Chrisley right now.
All right. Great. Mr. Chrisley, I'll let you get going. You have three minutes, and if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address before you start.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is John Chrisley. I live at 19 Humphrey Street. I appreciate you making time on the schedule tonight. I just wanted to recap. I should also mention, I'm a resident, but I'm also one of the board members of Safe Streets Wakefield, who's been working with the town on the townwide bike and ped plan, and I'm a member of the master plan advisory committee, also in that capacity. I just wanted to touch on the North Ave construction redesign that's underway currently. And I just wanted to touch on some of the highlights, which I think are going to be the benefits of this redesign, which is firstly, traffic calming. The design calls for narrowing the general purpose travel lanes to about the mass DOT standard of 11 feet. So this will have the benefit of slowing motor vehicle traffic down. And I also want to highlight some of the safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. I understand that the council has heard some of these comments back in December, when the North Ave project was also discussed. But briefly, I want to mention that the North Ave quarter is a highly, highly traveled quarter with trucks, a lot of motor vehicle traffic, and the protected bike lane that's being proposed for the North Ave both makes sense and in some cases is probably downright necessary. I had forwarded the council some information from the Federal Highway Administration showing that nearly one-third of fatal and serious bicycle crashes occurs on roads where motorists are overtaking a bike due to the differences of the speed and the weight of the vehicles. So I want to highlight that in my remarks tonight, and also talk about the interaction between the pedestrian safety and the bike safety. The redesign also calls for a much wider walkway on the western side of the lake, which I think, as everyone knows, is used frequently by many different types of pedestrians. So the combination of the wider walkway and the northbound bike lane is going to be a big win-win for Wakefield. That's kind of the highlight of my comments tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chrisley. Appreciate it. I see we have Bill Spalding in studio for public participation. If you wouldn't mind taking a seat, stating your name and address, please.
Thanks. Bill Spalding, 42 Bold Street. And I'm just catching my breath because I did just bike from the Seaport, and I got a flat of all nights. So I am an elected official on the planning board, not speaking for the planning board tonight. I am also on the Safe Streets group with John and the rest of the crew. I just want to state that this lane is really important for the town. The reason I believe it is, it allows families to travel around the lake in a safe way. Currently, it's not safe. So I've been commuting into Boston for close to 30 years, commuted to the Voke by bike in the eighties, so it's just something I'm used to doing. This lane isn't for people like me. This lane is for families. This lane is for people that don't feel so comfortable with traffic going by at 20, 30, sometimes more miles an hour on North Ave. I am for having the flexi-posts. The reason why is the flexi-post can be removed, and the mass guide for spacing these is about 10 feet. And that's something maybe the engineer and we can look at, because with a 10-foot spacing of these flexi-posts, I feel it's safe for a police officer to pull someone over, for anybody to get by if a school bus, for example, is stopped. I love that the school bus is stopping in the middle of the street and not pulling over because it's more of a presence blocking traffic in both directions for the students. So as I'm still catching my breath, I just really would like the Town Council to look closer into this. These posts can be removed. Let's try it out. There is no hurt in this. So Saturday, I sat at the farmer's market from about 9:15 to 1:00 for our bike valet. If you don't know, Safe Streets has a bike valet. We had six customers this week. That's really good. Some strollers, some bikes, and everything. What I did notice, the most cars that were illegally parked on North Ave were like two or three feet on the sidewalk, not allowing for people to really get by safely. That's no parking, if I'm correct on that. The most cars I counted were 22 cars. So if we're concerned about 22 cars during a farmer's market to not have these posts, I think the Town Council needs to reconsider why we have this lake for people to go around safely. I also looked at the houses up the street, and the streets on corners, so if trash delivery and other things that's happening along North Ave, there's only four or five residences that will have to make, I don't know how arrangements to have their trash if the flexi-posts are there, if they could pull them out to the curb, or if they could be on a side street. So that's something else to consider. But above all, if the fire department or police department think it's not safe to have the flexi-posts, then we can remove them and go back to the lane. But I really would like this council to give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Sorry to hear about your flat.
I only have like 10 minutes to pick, but that was my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Sheri, anyone else for public engagement?
Yes, we did get a comment from Maureen Melting, but she keeps declining to speak, so not sure.
Great. And we'll forward that around to the council for the record?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. All right. We are a tad early for our public hearing number two, so I'm going to skip around a little bit. And Counsel Vincent, can we take item number nine if you're ready? I know this is very early for you in the meeting for warrants.
Okay, warrants. You guys are lucky that you get to be here for the warrant discussion. Warrant number eight, it's 7.558 million. Of note is the Town Council has 1.14 million of it. Most of that's high school related, $968,000 for the high school project, $133,000 for left field, $34,000 and change for the bond building for the high school project. That's the vast majority of that Town Council expense. And if you look at Public Works, most of that expense is for MWRA, $333,000, that's the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, $333,000 for water, $682,000 and change for sewer. We pay that numerous months a year. Next warrant is warrant number 10, that's 2.199 million. Data processing is what you'll see is the most unusual one. That goes back to a budget that was approved last year to help them with computer software that was $78,000 of it. Another $42,000 for some engineering and installation of equipment. And then for the library, there's $48,000. $40,000 of that is Weather Shield that comes from the Library Capital. Next one is warrant number 12, that's $11 million. Nothing out of the ordinary there. It's insurance, it's treasure bills, it's light department, nothing there that was unusual or something we don't see that often. The last one is warrant number 14, that was $4 million and change. Once again, 1 million of that was Town Council, and the vast majority of that was dealing with the Wakefield High School. We're going to see that on a regular basis, that money coming out of the Town Council part of the budget. That's all I have for the warrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to continue to skip around a little bit. Item number 11, we have a donation of $1,275 from the Friends of Lake Quanapowit to replace the town's boat. Do I have a motion?
Moved that we accept the donation, but thanks.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Since I still have a minute to kill, we'll move on to item number 12, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the Town Council meeting minutes for October 2nd?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Abstaining as I was not here.
Great, thank you. Any opposed? Nope. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Do we have a motion to approve the October 2nd Town Council executive session minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And one abstention? Great, motion carries. And finally, motion to approve the Town Council meeting minutes of October 5th. This was the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. My clock is telling me it's 7:15, so moving back to item number 5B, I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing for the transfer of stock for D&amp;M Liquor Corp, excuse me, DBA S&amp;M Liquors.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the hearing is now officially open. Sheri, do we have the applicants online?
Yes. Looks like one applicant is online, but declined to come over. I don't see the attorney online.
Sheri, if you are talking, you're muted.
Yeah, the attorney just got on. Hold on for one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, he's coming over right now.
Hi, sorry about that.
Hi, Sean. Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
I apologize for being a little late. I had some issues here at home. My name is John Meridian, attorney from Democus Law Offices. I'm here on behalf of D&amp;M Liquor Corp, and I believe my client, Rakesh Patel, should be on the Zoom call also.
He is, yes.
We're seeking amendment to the liquor license. One is a stock transfer, and two is a change of officers, directors. The stock transfer is Rakesh is buying out a partner, Two Sharp Patel. So the current lineup is Rakesh Patel 50%, Bruges Patel 25%, and Two Sharp Patel 25% owners of stock. After this transaction, Rakesh will be 75% owner, and Bruges will be 25% owner. And the other change is to remove Two Sharp Patel as a director of the corporation. Those are the two changes. There's no other changes to the license. And without, I'll take any questions that the board may have regarding this.
Any questions or discussions from the council? Yes, Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Thank you, Mr. Meridian, for this. I think one of the biggest challenges that we have in town with liquor stores, and it's not specific to this site, but this site, S&amp;M, is one of the probably greater offenders, is the extent to which we are literally littering all the front windows with advertising signage of specials and the like. And I know there have been some others that have come before us where I've raised a similar concern, and they have scaled back considerably. That signage, I think it's candidly rather unsightly, and I don't think that it's necessary for these establishments to have from ceiling to floor windows that are papered with Bud Light for $12.99, or whatever the case might be, whatever specials are being run. And so what expectations does your client have going forward to try to address that so that it presents as a more welcoming and aesthetically pleasing neighbor on that street?
Yeah, so Sheri made me aware of that request, and I spoke to Rakesh about that, and he's, if not already, he's going to take those signs down and clean up the storefront area for you guys. I told him about that, so that's not an issue. Give us a few more weeks. His father just passed away, so, but give us a few more weeks and we can clean it up, and maybe you guys can come by and take a look. You're welcome to do that.
I'm sorry to hear of his father's passing, so my sympathy is in that regard. I would say that there is an economic opportunity, and our Economic Development Director is here as well. There's an economic opportunity, I think, as well, when these businesses present with a more appealing storefront. And I don't think that the notion of all that large signage with the specials is the way to attract the customer base that ultimately will drive profit, candidly. So I think it's smart economic decision-making. I do hope that the, I'll say majority owner, I guess, now, does heed this request seriously, does all that he can to make sure that just the whole facade looks more presentable than it does currently, because I think that would ultimately benefit him, and certainly it's something that's a priority of myself, and I think many within this town. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the record, I mean, this is a request, this is not a requirement of the license change that's being requested. Other questions from the council? All right. Seeing none, we'll open it up to public engagement with regard to the request to transfer stock and change directors for S&amp;M Liquors. Sheri, do we have anyone else online?
No, we're all set.
All right. Seeing no one in studio, we will consider that closed. Do we have a motion related to the transfer of stock and change of directors?
Moved to approve the transfer of stock and change of directors for S&amp;M.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I believe we have to take a roll call for this, Steve.
Yes.
All right. Motion on the table is to approve the transfer and change of directors. Counsel Dabrowski?
I'm voting yes with the expectation, as I described, and I look forward to coming by in a few weeks and seeing how much.
So that's a yes.
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you, John, to you and your client for attending. We'll take a motion now to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for being late again.
No worries. We understand. We've had a few little snafus for folks being here today, so we get it.
Problem is two years old, but that's the point.
Well, not a little snafu then.
Thanks, Sean.
Take care, Sean. All right. Moving on, item 6A, we have a presentation related to the nicotine-free generation proposal that's currently under consideration by the Board of Health. So I'd like to invite our health director and team up for that. I do want to clarify for the council and for the public, so this is an informational presentation. This is actually not something that will be subject to a Town Council vote. It is a Board of Health regulation, but wanted to bring this here for just some discussion and information sharing. Great. Please go ahead, Maureen and Anthony.
Thank you, Town Council, for allowing us to come tonight to present some information on this Board of Health regulation proposal. We wanted to kind of provide more information on this important work that we're doing surrounding tobacco and nicotine. I'm going to let Maureen do more, provide more context, but just to get the regulation language out, I was going to read the regulation, proposed regulation language, and then we'll go into the context. So the proposed language is the prohibition of sales. So no person, firm, corporation, establishment, or agency shall sell tobacco or cigarette products to anyone born on or after January 1st, 2004. Any person, firm, corporation, establishment, or agency who or which shall violate any provisions of this regulation and upon written notification shall be fined and suspended in accordance to the schedule set forth under the regulation of the Wakefield Board of Health restricting the sale of tobacco products.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to spend time with you tonight and present information about this proposed regulation, as Anthony said. My goal will be to explain how the policy would work and to provide some context for why we think this strategy should be considered. Tobacco use is still the leading cause of preventable death in the U.S. Every year, 480,000 Americans die prematurely of smoking-related disease. Billions of dollars are spent on smoking-related illness. So what have we done about it? The federal government, for instance, banned flavored cigarettes in 2009, although their ban exempted menthol cigarettes. And the U.S. has significant restrictions on TV and print advertising. The FDA is currently looking at a proposed ban on menthol cigarettes, as well as a ban on flavored cigars, though they are not considering banning flavored vapes, at least at this time. Meanwhile, local boards of health have made a huge difference. Local boards had the courage and conviction to pass a smoke-free workplace regulation, or actually law, two decades ago, against extreme pushback, especially from restaurants and bars. And now, we can't imagine riding on a plane, train, subway, bus, or going into a restaurant, bar, or theater where people are smoking. But it was a huge change at the time. Local boards have adopted many tobacco control regulations designed to reduce youth access to tobacco. Local boards, including the Wakefield Board of Health, were early adopters of T-21, a pharmacy ban, flavor restriction, cigar minimum price, permit cap, as well as a ban on smoking bars. Some of these policies have since made their way into state law. In fact, in 2020, Massachusetts became the first state in the nation to ban all-flavored nicotine products. So what has all this legislation, regulation, and policy change accomplished? It has moved the needle a bit. However, people still smoke and use other nicotine products, and millions are still affected by smoking, incense, and smoke, and vaping in our schools is a serious issue. We can be proud of what we've done, but the question is, what else can we do? Once young people start using nicotine products, it may be too late. At that point, they really have no choice because of the power of nicotine addiction. And the tobacco industry is always coming up, literally cooking up, new ways to attract new users. 10 years ago, it was pink and purple, foil-wrapped, little cigars for 69 or 79 cents. And I know all of you are aware of Juul, the cool sleek design that came in many appealing flavors like mango and fruit medley. They look like flash drives, making hard for parents and school personnel to recognize one on a desk or in a book bag. Now we have nicotine pouches. Made with nicotine salts, these pouches have a very high nicotine content. And you all have a packet of photos, but also on the left-hand side, you have a little Ziploc bag with a couple of pouches in it. Those are, they happen to be Zin, that's just a flavor. Those are nicotine pouches, they come in a tin like this, and that is not tobacco, but it's nicotine salts. And products made with nicotine salts, and I can't tell you about the chemistry or physiology of all this, but nicotine that is in nicotine salts instead of the nicotine that we are most commonly aware of in cigarettes and cigars, provides a quicker hit to the brain. In addition to the high nicotine content and the fact that they're salts with that quick hit, they're even more discreet than vapes. You put that between your cheek and your gum, nobody knows it's there, you don't have to spit, your saliva dissolves the nicotine, and you get that zap to your brain. And they're very, very cheap. A tin of nicotine pouches contains the nicotine equivalent of two and a half packs of cigarettes. And while two and a half packs of Marlboros cost about $32, a tin of Zin costs as little as $3.49. We've heard that some people start their gym workout by popping a pouch into their mouth before lifting, because it provides that buzz, that hit, that makes them feel powerful, and they feel like they can lift more. This addiction, I'm sure won't, I'm sorry, this makes addiction even more likely. And I'm sure you won't be surprised when I tell you that I'm seeing more and more shelf space taken up by these products. And again, you have photos in your packet. As I mentioned, Massachusetts banned flavors almost three years ago. Earlier this year, we started seeing a new product, Newport Non-Menthol Cigarettes. Same green packaging, which we've been told can trigger some menthol smokers who had quit to start up again. Turns out that while these new non-menthol cigarettes do not contain traditional menthol flavoring, they contain a chemical that tricks your brain into thinking that what you just inhaled is menthol. Menthol, you may be aware, is more addicting and harder to quit. In your packet, there's a photo from a local store. The sign just above the display of Newport says, "Non-Menthol for the Menthol Smoker." Not even a bit subtle. There's also a menthol card, I haven't seen them around here, but I've heard about them, a card that you slip into your pack of unflavored cigarettes. a card that you slip into your pack of unflavored cigarettes. You wait 24 hours, and then you have a menthol-flavored cigarette. Luckily, our state law bans flavor enhancers as well as flavored products. One of the latest vape products I've heard about is the Highlighter Vape. And again, there are photos in your packet. Pretty hard for a parent or a teacher to spot. And I guess that these vape devices were not designed with you or me in mind. So the question is, what do we do about it? Now may be the time for a strategy that will start us on a path to end nicotine addiction. In 2020, the town of Brookline passed a bylaw that made it illegal for Brookline retailers to sell tobacco products to anyone born after 1-1-2000. It's actually pretty simple. As of 1-1-2020, anyone purchasing a tobacco product in Brookline has to have been born before 1-1-2000. Brookline retailers have to remember just one date, whereas now, the minimum legal sales age changes every single day. So in summary, no one who is already 21 loses his or her privilege to purchase tobacco products. This policy starts to move us towards the end of tobacco use and addiction, which, as I said, has harmed millions and cost billions for decades. There's no reason to allow this public health crisis to continue just so the tobacco industry can grow their profits. And I wrap up with retailers have a long time to get used to lower tobacco sales. Each year, just one year's worth of potential new buyers will not be able to legally buy tobacco. It's a, it's a slow phase out. So lots of lead time, no one has a privilege taken away, it's easier for store clerks, straightforward to enforce, and we finally move towards a nicotine-free generation. Thank you.
And now, if you have questions? Thank you, Ms. Dabrowski, we appreciate it. I, you know, I'm glad you talked about sort of the history of the actions that, you know, we've taken in our community and in general around nicotine usage and smoking, because I do think that is one of the great public health success stories of certainly my lifetime. And it's sobering to see some of the challenges to that, that you've brought up in terms of new products. You know, when you passed this out, I had no idea what this actually was and feeling a little bit ignorant as a result of that. I see our Board of Health Chair is here, Laurel Goreville. Do you have any, anything you'd like to add, Laurel, before we open it up to questions or comments?
I would like to congratulate you.
And if you wouldn't mind just coming to the microphone, too. They can't hear you on, on CAT. We can hear you, but.
I just hurt my back, so I'm going to stand up. Again, Maureen has always been so comprehensive in formulating these ideas. I will say, this is an interesting concept because we didn't come up, come up with it. It's kind of an outside in, there, you know, we have some regional capacity to think about this. We have an open meeting, a public hearing on Wednesday that I would invite, you know, anybody who is interested to come because I think, I always worry about unintended consequences. This is a very pure, really good idea, but the devil is in the details, as we say. You know, we have New Hampshire just to the north of us, we have a lot of online and illicit things happening. So this is yet, you know, yet another strategy. So I'm looking forward to hearing public comment. We're not going to, you know, we're going to sort of wait and see, you know, how things unfold in Brookline as they have some details that they're working out. I think in my tenure here as the Board of Health, you know, we have gone from, you know, we, we have gotten more and more assertive at being kind of in front of the curve, and so we'll see how this goes. I will tell you to, you know, the science around this, I'm now a psychiatric nurse practitioner, and when I look at the, the data on the addiction properties of nicotine, it is the highest and fastest hijack that we have of all of the substances that we know. And I did, you know, and I'm, I'm reserving my thoughts about this because I think it's a pure, great idea. I just worry about some political backlash that we have. You know, the country is in a different place than where we were, and the reception to public health is in a different place. We've been battered, so I'm considering all of those things in the, in the big picture. But I spoke to a client who is very upset he can't get menthol toothpicks because he's, he's working on, you know, not smoking in, in public, and that kind of got included in that. But I, you know, asked him about this, I said, you know, what do you think? He said, oh yeah, if you could get a few kids not to get on this, wouldn't that be a great thing? So it kind of changed my thinking in regards to feeling a little, it, it, it just made an impact on me when he said that. I think most smokers, when you speak with them, would like not to have the addiction. They're struggling with quitting, so wouldn't it be nice to get ahead of it? So as a prevention model, I think it's pretty cool. I am just open to hearing in the public hearing what people may say because I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of, wow, it doesn't matter, you can do online and this and this, but it certainly sends a message, we're not New Zealand, this is where this idea started. The U.S. is a little bit different. Maureen has been really articulate in regards to, there is no constitutional right to inhale a toxin, and that's what nicotine is. I mean, nicotine in no dose is safe or medicinal. So we'll see. This may be, you know, I, I am, you know, cautiously optimistic, but thanks for inviting me to comment.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to members of the council for questions or, or comments. Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this presentation. Very, very enlightening, certainly. A couple of questions I had, one of them related to the smoke shops on Albion that have since closed. Are they any indication of where the town's sentiment is in terms of nicotine and other, other related products? Or is it just coincidental, not correlated?
Right. I can't give business advice, but I can tell you what I think might have, might have happened. We have had some vape shops, I've worked in seven communities, and all of the communities, well, a couple didn't have any vape shops at all, but the communities that had a number of vape shops have seen some of them close. And I think it's a matter of competition. How many vape shops can a town like Wakefield support in, you know, how many vapors are there buying these, these products? So I think that was, that was one of the, or is one of the issues. And many people have moved on to other, less expensive products. As I said, we used to hear about people vaping before they went on to the basketball court or the sock, kids, before the soccer field, hockey rink, or whatever. And vaping was discreet, this is more discreet, and it's much cheaper. A Juul vape device is about $35, and a four-pack of pods is anywhere from 15 to 25, depending on where you go. This is much cheaper. So the industry is going to find new ways all the time to hook our kids because, as Laurel said, and as we know, nicotine is the most difficult addiction to quit. Medical professionals tell us, harder to quit than heroin. And nicotine is a poison. When it's ingested, it's, it's a poison. And I have a colleague who often says, nicotine is the only legally sold product in the U.S. that when used as directed kills.
And I think on that, too, the, you had mentioned about students, and obviously, we're looking at that youngest generation, I think, with the most optimism or most, most hope. Do you have a sense of what sort of policies we have at, at the school department level relative to, you know, any students that might be, say, caught with these or some of these highlighters and the like? I mean, I imagine the Health Department's working with the schools on that, too. Could you help maybe, help the public understand?
Sure, absolutely. Wakefield, and credit is, should be given to the Wake Up Coalition because they've worked really hard to come up with all kinds of programs. And one of them is they worked with the schools on a diversion program. So nicotine falls under the, the school chemical policy. So if a student's using it, then they can be, you know, warning, suspended, there are steps. And those steps over time have changed. So now we, we feel, we know that it's better for our kids, rather than suspending them and having them at home to vape or, or, you know, use these products and play video games, it's better to have them in school. So the schools, instead of suspending them, have a diversion program where your, your counselors work with the students, they have a program that the students have to complete. Parents are notified, I can't remember, all the school districts are a little different, I can't remember yours specifically. But I can say that yours is, the Wakefield Public Schools model is often looked to as a very good model, and we've shared it with other school districts because it is such a good, a good model. And then the, the Wake Up Youth Action Team have done a lot of work around a lot of different programs, but also around vaping. You know, Vaping 101 is part of the Parent University. So a lot of work has been done in this community. And as I said in my early remarks, Wakefield has been a leader in adopting good policies, but also in investing in youth in terms of finding programs to help youth with issues, whether it's mental health. And by the way, there is, mental health and substance use, you know, is such an intersection. And we hear from, you know, I remember a school nurse telling me, don't take away these products unless you give the kid something else to use, they use it for stress reduction. But what we know, using these products actually worsens the stress issues, the anxiety issues. So we really need to find a way to make sure that kids don't get addicted to these prob, these products because once you're addicted, it's just too hard to, to quit. And Anthony, you may want to speak to the, you know, the brain science of why the addiction is so difficult.
So I think it was great that we touched on nicotine use and how it's a very difficult addiction to quit. And one of the things that, you know, without getting into all the details, I think, you know, there's some term that describes this phenomenon, it's synaptic remodeling. So what happens when nicotine enters the brain, they are, there are these receptors that receive the nicotine. And so this is to mediate the effects of nicotine, and when there is an increase in nicotine intake, there's an increase in these receptors. And so this is kind of a feedback loop in the sense that as more nicotine is consumed, more of these receptors, you know, create pleasure in the brain. And so over time, what happens is increased chronic use of addiction causes tolerance. So the brain down-regulates these receptors, they have, you know, to make sure that, you know, the effects of nicotine are lessened. And so over time, when this happens, it creates, you know, a tolerance. So you need more of this substance to create the same effect that you had before. The persistence of this, and addiction science is still a growing field, we're still learning a lot about it. But what is known through research is that these pathways that are created, these, the synaptic remodeling, is somewhat, is functionally permanent. So these changes, you know, over time, need to be corrected. And so having this information, you know, that's why nicotine is so hard to, to quit because once these changes are made, it's a really difficult choice to make. And so you need that, you need, even a little bit of nicotine can cause the same feeling. And so having this, having this knowledge, we understand that it needs to have comprehensive support and treatment services. And so, you know, from the spectrum of prevention all the way through treatment, we understand that this policy, while it won't solve the issue entirely, this is prevention in its purest form. And so we need to support all ends of this effort.
I'll just finally add that I've actually started to hear commercials on podcasts for these, and I was surprised by it. And they made it out to be like, almost like a nicotine, like a cigarette alternative essence. But even listening to how it was described, obviously in a positive way, they were trying to put a spin on it. I think this, it, the advertising is probably as covert as the usage because it's almost like, you know, chewing tobacco or a lipper, but you don't have to have them just be spitting into. It's, and you don't have a fog around you like you would vaping and the like. So, I mean, I could have one of these in right now, and no one would, no one would be any more the wiser on that. So it's, it is troubling, and to the extent we can get ahead of this, I think it's a really important thing for us to do as a community. Thank you.
Yeah, it's scary that it's really like having a mint in your mouth. Counsel Smith Galvin?
Thank you.
These are mints, yeah.
And I know, we've, we've talked about this probably over the course of the year. And I have to say, I mean, much like Laurel says, it's, it's kind of hard to know what the consequences are going to be, but when I see her and I think, and I hear the presentation, and my kids are out of high school now, but I can tell you the people of that age that I know doing nicotine are starting it as freshmen and sophomores in the high school, and they're not buying it themselves because the age is, what, 21? They're, they're getting it from their 22, 23, 24-year-old friends. And so I actually think that a solution like this would, you know, in five or six years, there would be nobody else to buy this nicotine for these high schoolers anymore. And so I, I think we need to look at it kind of over a 10, a 10-year period. I am, you know, not at all convinced, you know, these are good kids using the nicotine in the high school, and they, they have serious, you know, anxiety, and, and it's readily available. And I, and I know we're doing amazing things with Wake Up, but just not having that supply be there? Now, I would much prefer that we have policymakers, you know, limit these being even legal in the United States. Like, these pouches should not, in my opinion, be legal. And so I know that we'll continue to work on, on the, the supply side, but, you know, this demand and their ability to get it so easily, and if we could phase out kind of that whole supply chain from their older siblings and friends, I think that could be really critical. So I am, I am definitely open to exploring it, and I trust with the Health Department that they'll, they'll take public comment and make a decision.
Counsel Danahue?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Shocking. It's really scary, I'm glad that my children are older. And, you know, I think that it's really important that people understand that this is not taking cigarettes away from people who smoke who are older, this is about getting big tobacco out of business, making big tobacco go out of business. And, you know, they really should be out of business for all of what they've been doing, which is so unethical. And so I think that, and what I, what I like about this as well is that it's good prevention. I mean, I'm kind of tired of seeing the, the anti-smoking ads that are all scare tactics, that are all scare tactics, and without kind of that, that what do you do about this? And this is doing something about it. And I also like that, that you see this as just one piece of a bigger issue, and that it is being addressed. That was going to be one of my questions, well, what are we, what else are we doing for kids who are addicted already? And how are we, how are we helping them? So that's really good to hear. But it is, this is, I don't know anybody, I don't know anybody who smokes who would say, oh, I hope my kids smoke. I think that everybody knows that, they know, and if they didn't, they, they could quit, they would. That everybody knows the, the harm related to that. And I had one more comment. Oh, but understanding, what's been the experience of Brookline? I mean, I understand that we're going to learn from them, and that mistakes have been made, but, but it's, you know, what have some of the challenges been?
So Brookline's not in my, my region. However, I have inspected Brookline stores for a colleague who kind of, she has a big region and got behind and asked me to do inspections. So I went there and I did the usual speech that I do, these are the local laws, these are the state laws, remind, you know, we do educate retailer education every year. And when I started to say about the legal age to buy, all the store owners said, yeah, 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 I know, they have to be born by 1-1-20. Or, I'm, I'm sorry, 1-1-2000. So it's one date, they all know it, they all remember it, there's one sign. It was, so, so that, you know, kind of caught my attention and made me realize that this is really more streamlined than what we're doing now, where now the minimum legal sales age changes every single day. A clerk comes in and they got to remember, oh, it's this date for somebody to be 21 and be able to buy. So, so that was, that was one thing. My call, and I did do compliance checks in Brookline, but I was using someone under the age of 21 who was born, who was born after, let me see if I get that right. You know, they, they weren't legal to buy no matter what, whether we're using the birthdate restriction or the age restriction. And, and two of the stores sold to them, in spite of that. Since then, I know my colleague has used a 21-year-old who was, who became 21 after the, you know, the cutoff date, and same thing, not the same two stores, but two stores sold. So we have to do enforcement, we have to do education, we have to do enforcement, we have to continue to watch the industry and see what, what else they're coming up with. These, these have been around for a little bit, but they're, they're so new that the DOR, Department of Revenue, doesn't even have an excise tax on them. So when the DOR agents go in and check cigarettes, cigars, and chewing tobacco, or loose tobacco, they're not even checking these. So they're not checking for flavors because this isn't even on their radar.
Well, I do hope that those do become illegal. There's a docu-series on Netflix about vaping, the vaping one, and that's really frightening. So it's a history of, you know, so hopefully, those will be banned, and hopefully, we'll be playing our part. And I know that people will say, well, you can just go to New Hampshire, you can go to another town and get it. But you know what, there's always going to be ways to get around something, and I think it's really important for us as a community. And I think it's really important for us as a community to say, this is who, this is what we stand for, that we want to, you know, um, protect young people and help them avoid addiction, which is a terrible thing. So, um, you know, this is just one measure and I think it represents what we want our community to represent. So I'm interested in seeing how this all unfolds. So thank you.
I just wanted to, a couple of people have mentioned treating anxiety with nicotine. So I just want to, I want to clarify the biology here. You're treating the, you're, you're, you're treating withdrawal with nicotine. So it's like any addictive thing, if you don't get it, to feel normal, you need to get it again. So, you know, I hadn't even sort of really thought about coupling this, but as you well know, we have a pediatric, public health crisis in anxiety and depression and mental health issues. And substances, we all know, are not the answer. I mean, we could talk all night about it, you know, the whole cannabis refractory stuff is, is really coming up. So I think, you know, it will be interesting. This has really been evolving and, and, you know, if it can be pulled off and if we can actually kind of do a longitudinal look at it, I think, um, I don't really think there's a downside. I just, I, I just know that we have to be very careful about educating the community so that it's perceived in the way in which it is meant.
Any other questions, Counselor Johnson?
That's okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make sure from a process standpoint, so you're, you're looking at possibly having a Board of Health written policy.
Correct.
Okay. You said Brookline had a bylaw.
That's correct.
Um, I don't remember which number it is, but if you look at the E-code, electronic code for Wakefield, it's divided into divisions. Either Division 3 or 4 is Board of Health. One is Planning Board and one is Board of Health. And that's the section where the Board of Health for Wakefield currently has your regulations. So that's a good place to look to see what currently is in there. And also that may be a place, you could either place your policy in that section of E-code or you could have it as a standalone policy.
We visited the policy four times in five years.
Let you know that you have that E-code. It's either 3 or 4. Like I said, I can't remember which one's Planning Board and which one's Board of Health. One's one and one's the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Buck.
Um, uh, I just wanted to thank you for this presentation and just, um, ask you, Maureen, you talk about working in seven communities. Anthony, you work in three communities. Can you just tell us the conversations in other communities? And also I see the letter from our delegation, is there a statewide, um, is it, is this moving statewide at all, like all the other stuff you talked about?
Great, yeah, great question. So the seven communities I work in are Malden, Medford, Melrose, Wakefield, Winchester, Stonem and Reading. So I'm, I'm working my way through the, through the communities and explaining the policy to them. The, this week, we're having public hearings in Stonem Tuesday night, Wakefield Wednesday night, and Melrose Thursday night. Winchester Board of Health will probably do a public hearing. I don't want to commit them to it, but I, the thinking is they'll do a public hearing in November. Um, I presented to the Reading Board of Health and if I remember right, they're going to, they're going to vote in the November meeting whether to do a public hearing in December. Um, and then I'll work my way into Malden and Medford. In Malden, we've talked to several, several folks. In fact, um, the Health Director and the Chair of the Board of Health of Malden actually zoomed in when I was presenting to the Wakefield Board of Health. So they've actually already heard the presentation and Anthony and I met some months ago with Mayor Christensen in Malden and he wants to, he said, you know, let's do it. So the idea is we, because of the New Hampshire and all this, you know, and go to the next town and so on, the idea is that we'd like to do this regionally and give some protection to all of our stores. Yes, people will be able to go to, go to New Hampshire. But I do hear from store owners that some people have actually quit smoking because they can't, initially they went to New Hampshire to get their flavored products, but it's too much trouble and now they're not, they're not. So when, when, you know, it's another barrier. If it's not right here, I think Ann said that if it's not right here, it's harder, it's another barrier. And so we want to put up as many barriers as we can to, to youth getting access to these. So I hope I answered your, your question.
And a statewide bill?
Oh, so, um, so the Senator Lewis, we've chatted with Senator Lewis and Kate, Rep. Kate Libergarvidian and Rep. Wong, and State Senator Jason Lewis has indicated that he would be happy to file a, a bill and asked us for language. So it didn't get into the bills that were filed that are in, you know, in this session. But also I've heard that Senator Keenan in Quincy on the South Shore is very interested in, in filing a bill at the state level. He was the driver behind the flavor ban. Um, and the reason that he got behind that was because some youth visited him and showed him the kinds of products that they were seeing in their school that kids were using. And he was appalled and he got behind the, the flavor ban and, and just educated his fellow legislators and that passed, not quite unanimously, but, but almost.
Thank you. Mr. McLean.
Actually, I was going to ask about the state, whether the state was getting active on this. So the questions got covered. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, so the hearing is Wednesday at what time and place?
6:30 PM.
6:30?
The Galvin Middle School cafeteria.
Great. Well, thank you so much. This has been incredibly enlightening, a little, little frightening in a lot of ways too, but appreciate all your work on this and, and the effort that's gone into considering this. It's a, it's a complicated issue and, and you guys have done a great job of really bringing some of these things to light for, both for us, but for the Board of Health and the public as well. So appreciate your time tonight.
And thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, shifting gears, um, moving on to items 6A, 6B and C. We have an update from the Public Works Department on upcoming projects or projects in flight as well as the Envision Downtown project. So, Mr. Conway and Mr. Renaud, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here with all of you. For the record, Joe Conway, Public Works Director, next to be, someone that certainly probably doesn't need any introduction, but I will anyway. Bill Renaud, our fabulous town engineer. So now what you're about to see is basically Bill's lightning round of some of the exciting things that have been happening this summer. So he'll go through a whole bunch of projects that we're seeing, talk about a little bit what's to come, kind of round out how our construction season has gone and shaped up. I am going to slip into the B chair, I think is what we called it last time. Color commentary, so I will turn it over to Bill and he will walk you through some fantastic stuff.
Great. Thank you, Joe. So I'll start with first the big plug for our interactive construction viewer. So I know the council's very well aware of this, but all of our updates for our projects, products that are in planning mode, products that are in design mode, and projects that are under construction, we update this webpage. So you can find it on the town's first page. You can also use the QR code on the screen. It includes schedules, basically project overview for scope of what we're doing and then what program that it begun, it's part of, kind of looking at it more in the, in the big picture context. So you get all of that information in our interactive construction viewer. That is updated basically regularly. So at a minimum, once a week, as times change, schedules change, we're providing updates to the schedules there. So highly recommend that everybody go there for the most up-to-date information. Starting on our roads program, our 2022 contracts. So our contractor has been working since May to install sidewalks on the various streets in the lower right-hand corner. We had about two miles of, of roadway that was included within the contract. That included our Salem and Lowell intersection realignment, also included Salem Street, so portions of the, um, the National Grid Works, um, area. Currently, our folks are out there doing roadway milling on all of the streets that are remaining to be paved. You'll see that Salem should be, if it wasn't done today, it's done tomorrow and Montrose has already been milled. So paving begins later this week and into next week. Part of our work also includes casting adjustments. So they go through to each of the streets to adjust the castings to where they need to be for the final paving. So essentially they're going in the operation of milling, casting adjustments, and then the, and then the paving of the street. They come back and that's when they top the sidewalks and do the driveway aprons to kind of blend everything together. So that'll be going on for the remainder of the month and sidewalk work will probably extend into the first week in November. Uh, I think it may make sense to, if anyone has questions on individual projects as I go, rather than waiting to the end, I'm happy to answer any questions on the 2022 contract.
Any questions from the council?
All right, fast forward. All right. Now our 2023 contract. Uh, we did have some delay due to curb procurement from our contractor. So they began work, um, in late September, early October with drainage installation on, on Broadway. Our main focus is going to be Broadway for this, for this round here through the remainder of October. So they're starting up curb and ramp installations as well as reclaim and paving a little bit later in the week. They also have to excavate and grade the sidewalks out there. Some of that work is just beginning now. Uh, the work will extend into November, potentially through the middle of the month and maybe even to, to the week of Thanksgiving, weather-dependent. And then we're trying to get in top course and sidewalk paving and everything all done prior to winter shutdown. Uh, this project had over three miles worth of construction planned. So the remaining of, the remaining work will happen in April to June of next year. Um, one of the streets that we're working on right now and meeting with the contractors on Salem Street from Navalus Way to Sullivan Playground, our water contractor is still working in that area this week and then they're going to be boxing up hopefully by midweek. So we're trying to see if they can, if they can fit it in with their, with an additional crew to come in to do work on Salem. If you've driven by it lately and now that we've completed the, the water work as well, there's not much road left and it is pretty choppy. So we'd like to try to get that done prior to, prior to our, our winter season for our flower drivers.
If I can just interject for one second, back on that slide. So, uh, one of the things, a great perspective from my job is I get to see Bill's group working every day. And you've probably heard the both of us in, you know, offline correspondence or sitting in here tell you about some of the material delays and things like that, especially granite. I just want to take a second to publicly acknowledge Bill and his staff. So, uh, this is a priority for us, absolutely, to get it done. We want to be able to do it right. We want to be able to install the granite as we propose. Anytime that we got, you know, we typically have like a hundred mile range of vendors that we use for granite, give or take. And the answer is, you know, either staffing shortage or there's a material delay, didn't cut it. So I can personally tell you that Bill's staff didn't leave one vendor uncontacted within New England to find this and try to advance it as fast as he could. And I think that the contractor under contract was even surprised that, I believe it was Tim Wilson from the office, found the material that we needed, I believe in Rhode Island, and arranged for that to happen quicker than anybody else could. So I just wanted to publicly bring that up and say that, you know, from my perspective, I know the town's perspective, we appreciate that, you know, drive to get that done and make that happen. So kudos.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So Tim, here's, here's the shout-out.
Any questions on the 2023, Counselor Dubarsky?
Actually, if I could just make a, a comment because I think it's an important piece for folks to know. I know, uh, Mr. Renaud, in, in talking about this, this planning of projects, the curb procurement delay, so basically the delay in getting curbing here, has, has thrown the schedule a little bit off. But I think it's important to underscore to folks that the planned projects and the seat, and the list that you had remains unchanged. It's just shifted as a result of that, but it's not as if other projects are, are taking priority or anything of the sort. So if someone expected that their work would be done this fall, it may be done this fall or it may kick into the spring because as you, you point out, you know, weather requires us to have to close up at some point.
Right.
But no one, but the way that it's contracted with, with these various providers, no one street, if they were on the list and next in line, are, they're not being taken off the list or, or replaced by anyone.
Yeah, correct. So, you know, when we say we're deferring it to next year, we're not deferring it to a future bid. That's not what we're doing. So the list is the same. The focus will be on Broadway and potentially Salem. We probably will not be able to get the curb in time, but we may be able to at least grind the road back up, pave it to binder, and then we can come back the following year, do the curb work, sidewalk work, and then top it. So well, those are the two focuses right now. All the other streets are going to be done in the spring. So I think their contract goes to June, so they're going to be hot and heavy next year doing all the remaining work.
Piggybacking on Director Conway, I know, having spoke with you frequently on this, on this issue, you are on top of things and your team is on top of things. I know you're moving as fast as can be, but you're not going to do work that's not to the caliber you want just to get it done. You want to make sure that we have some that's going to last for folks. So if they're going to experience some inconvenience, it's going to be with a good benefit ultimately at the end.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
If you don't mind. If you would explain to the public the difference between reclaiming
Yes.
And milling and overlay. Because I think that's an important distinction in why that is.
We get in our engineer.
You've learned a few things over the years.
You have. We get stuck in our engineer brains, right? So we know, expecting everybody knows all the terms, right? So, uh, so reclaim is when we grind the, the pavement into the dirt below. And what we're going to do is reshape the road from the dirt up. So we're installing two, three layers of asphalt depending on where, where the road's being constructed. Sometimes we do a base course, then a binder course. Sometimes we just, and then a top course. Sometimes we just do binder course and top course. So, um, yeah, that's, uh, that, you've seen that probably happen. A good example of that would be Pleasant Street last year was what we did. That was a good example of it. And then the milling is when we basically shave off the top layer of asphalt and replace it. So they, that's similar to what you see on the highway. So when they grind it and you have the grooves and that's, that's basically the, the mill and overlay. We mill that off and we replace it with the same, the same amount of pavement.
So when you reclaim, it's because the existing roadway is so thin
Right.
That you didn't just, you couldn't do it the other way?
That's one reason. So thin, so we, we core before we develop our plan. So we go and poke a few holes, see how thick that the pavement is. We also look at the material below to see if it's going to hold up and that it has the right gradation so that it's going to drain properly and, and it's going to have the structural stability. Some roads don't have that, so we have to grind them up because we, we would want to mill it, but we don't have enough pavement to melt. So that happens sometimes. Uh, other times, we're just at a condition where the road has deteriorated so much that we can't mill it because the cracks and all the deterioration has gone through to the lower pavement structure, so we have to build it all back up. So we, we try not to reclaim, that's the goal, but unfortunately, some streets just get to that point. Um, you know, if there's multiple utility cuts too, that's another reason why we would do it. So Salem, that's basically the reason. We've had, you know, gas installation, the National Grid installation, and then also our own water main installation. So at this point, it's all one big large patch that's not homogeneous, so we want to go through and grind it back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So jumping to our water mains. So I gave you a little quick precursor on that. So our, our water main work is, is in the process right now of, of boxing up. They're working on Houston Street currently. So our mains have been installed on Salem, Eaton and Houston, and also on White Circle. Services have been done on Salem, Eaton, and they're on Houston currently. After they finish Houston, which will be later this week, they're going to move on to, uh, White Circle and finish the, uh, services on that street. So they're looking to box up probably by the end of this month is what we're thinking, realistically. And then they have some additional work that remained on Chestnut Street and Cedar Street. They may look to do some preliminary work for next spring's, you know, water main installation on those streets. But we're expecting Chestnut and Cedar to happen, um, spring of next year. The contract does extend to December, but we, we're expecting this to be done probably within the first couple of months.
I'm assuming on the slide, when we say spring '23, we mean spring '24?
Yeah, that's a typo. Thank you.
You passed the alertness test.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to hop in the DeLorean and jump in a little bit.
Bill, what are the water gates?
So water gates are installed at most of the intersections that basically allows us to turn off the water for a certain street, so if there's a water main break, so we're not just constantly pumping out water, we turn the gates, that shuts them off. So we have them in a bunch of locations at all the intersections, typically we're trying to install a few more to give us more control over the system as to how we can send water when there is a break and have smaller shutdowns for those breaks.
Is that a major area type of thing?
Not really, no, it's really just an intersection, yeah, so it's a small assembly, they'll have typically three gates that they install, it's probably about the size of maybe two of these desks, I would say, and, you know, and it goes in a T configuration, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions on water main? There's a lot of cool other things you could ask about. Speaking of water, so Hart Hill Water Tank is one of our biggies, so for the past, through the spring into the fall, we've been working on tank removal, so basically you can see in the bottom right-hand corner that happened within the last couple of weeks for the actual removal of the tank. Pre-work, we had to do a lot of electric work, some reconfiguration of the piping and gating systems for how the water gets into the tank, our testing valve pits and how we, spots where we go to test, so a lot of preliminary work to allow this to happen. The new tank will be installed between November and December of this year with our final site paving, plantings, cleanup, and all the last minute work all happening in the spring, but the tank will be in operation by December of this year, which is good news. It's been a fairly big project for us. Next year, we're going to have the transmission water main for Green Street, Dillaway, and Upland. As I'm sure we all remember, Green Street's had a series of breaks, unfortunately, this was in the queue for the last one, unfortunately though, we're having delays on the valving because it's a much bigger pipe, so it's a longer lead time for those valves, that's what's pushing us into '24 for next year for that work. All right, jumping into North Ave Shared Use Path, that's been ongoing for the last month, month and a half or so, they've been working on the western side to get the paving of the sidewalk completed. The intent really is to allow folks to detour around the construction when it's going to happen on the lakeside, so that's why we didn't start on the lakeside, even though that's the majority of the work, you know, we still want folks to be able to use in the recreation, so that's the idea of kind of phasing it in that manner. So we'll be working on paving this week, we'll see that happen, and then we'll be moving over to the western side next week with curb installation and some sidewalk preparation. We're looking at means and methods a little bit, the contractor has proposed a couple of other ways to do the work to expedite it, which we're intrigued with and we'll be talking with them this week on, so. This is expected to continue into November as well, but we're trying to knock down how much work they're doing in November by these other means and methods. That's going to be a pretty cool project, I don't know if we want to talk about flex posts, we have an opportunity now if we want to.
I know it's part of your other presentation.
A little bit, quick blur, but now would be the time, I think?
Okay, go ahead then.
So
I think we've got you for like the next three agenda items.
There we go, there we go. So, yeah, so the flex post idea was something that was brought up, it wasn't originally proposed as part of the project, the council asked us to incorporate it, which we were happy to do, but we did decide to make this a non-permanent installation, so most of the folks will actually bolt them into the ground, that's not something that we thought was appropriate here on North Ave because of the lake and trying to do our cleanup. So what we're doing is using kind of, if we've been downtown, we had these yield for pedestrians that have like a little black rubber base that holds the post up, those are what we're looking to install, so those are movable at any point, but, you know, obviously would provide the same benefit, I mean technically anybody could really drive through the other permanent installation ones too, it doesn't really change anything, so the idea is to give you more of a vertical, you know, view to see where the bike lane is, so that's the proposal that we had for that, and that's how we were looking to continue, but again, there's not a long-term decision being made on that, so at any point, you folks could decide that you want to change that decision, that would be up to you, or if you wanted to add more, we could look to do all of that too. So I think it's, you know, we'll have it, if you want to consider it a trial, you could, but realistically, that's how our permanent solution was planned to be.
And Bill, just from a moveability standpoint, so not bolt it into the ground, my recollection is the ones downtown, I mean, they don't like blow in the wind or anything, they're pretty heavy.
Yeah, like a cone, like a traffic cone, same idea.
They're ballasted, even, you know, even sometimes if they get hit, they'll knock over and stand itself right back up, so, you know, they had to be rugged enough so you could go back to 30 miles an hour and it doesn't move.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, they're heavy, I mean, I think that's the key, you know, but a worker can move it, a person can move it.
Got it, but they're not going to, you know, they're not
They're not flapping around, yeah.
There's not a strong risk that they're going to kind of move around on their own just based on traffic.
Exactly.
Not even that, with the wind load in that area too, coming off the lake, they'd be sturdy enough to be out there with no intention of moving unless some mechanical force acts against it.
Got it.
Any questions or discussion on that piece before we move on? Council Danahue?
Could you just clarify for people maybe watching where exactly or how long it's going to be, where it starts and where it ends?
Yeah, well, they're going to go along the whole bike lane, that was what was proposed, so they would be spaced, I think Mr. Spaulding, when he was here earlier, was thinking about 10 feet, I haven't really decided what I think the right spacing is, but that doesn't seem too far off, maybe, you know, somewhere between 10 and 20 feet, I think seems right. And they're going to be located, so if you remember our original proposal, we had the two travel lanes, we had a two-foot gore strip in between, so it was like a hatched area where you're not supposed to drive in, it would be placed in that, and then there's the five-foot bike lane and then the shared use path that goes beyond it, so it's in that two to three
But where on North Ave, just so people
We're starting from Hall Park to Quinipal Parkway, that is what the current proposal is, unless we decide to make a revision to that.
Councilor Smith-Gowden?
I just want to say that I think that that's consistent with what we talked about back in November, we had never, you know, we'd said experiment, see what, we didn't expect them to be all season, so I think it'll be good to see those probably go up in the spring.
That's the meantime.
Great, Council Dubarsky?
Oh, sorry.
I do think we should be somewhat mindful of the area where the farmer's market is, I know there's been a lot of discussion about parking or parking where it's technically not allowed, but I'm also sensitive to the concerns that the farmer's market has expressed about, the ability to have the capacity to, you know, have customers be able to come to the market, so I don't know what that answer is, you know, this evening, but I think it is something that we have to just bear in mind as we're thinking through this. I think that's part of the reason why I like the removable nature of what you're talking about thus far, but to the extent that there is any ability to be somewhat creative, at least for that stretch along Hall Park
Sure.
And I don't know that there is, but I would hope that there is.
Yeah, we've actually had some dialogues, Steve and I both have had dialogues with the farmer's market folks and talking about that area, so they are removable, or movable, right? So they can be moved to allow somebody to load in for the farmer's market, for some of the smaller vendors that do that, the larger ones, you know, it would help, be helpful for them to maybe get into Hall Park itself and unload their stuff there, so we're looking at, you know, ways to make that happen, we're going to have, you know, a new ramp that's going to be placed at the corner of the Vets parking lot, so there's ways to get folks in there through the driveways and the access, the pathways that are there, we can beef those up, we think, with the Vets bathroom project that we're going to be talking about a little bit, so we have, I think, some solutions that are pretty easy to accommodate all of those requests.
Because I'll say, having gone by this past weekend, gas and light, both parking lots were pretty much at capacity, there were a number of vehicles parked along in North Ave on the Hall Park side, and obviously the Vets parking lot was full, so I just think we have to be mindful of that because I don't want to see us in a position where we're compromising the farmer's market in any way, I think it's just too valuable a resource for us.
Moving on, sidewalk program, so this is our ARPA Fund sidewalk program, our contractor has joined, has come to town this month or a little bit towards the end of September, with starting on Montrose, the corner of Montrose and Water Street, if you've driven there, you know that there is a major site dis- distance issue with those large bushes that are there, and those are, there's a new owner there, so it appears that we're going to be taking those down, but there is a fence behind it, so part of the project was to kick the sidewalk out into the roadway more so that the stop bar is further into the road, that was one of the reasons that we did this, as well as defining the pedestrian area a lot better through this stretch. So, if you recall, what it looked like was essentially a big expansive parking lot, and that was your sidewalk too, there was no break, so from a pedestrian safety standpoint, we didn't think that really made a ton of sense, so we'll have a visual distinction with the concrete, so we did it as a concrete sidewalk through this stretch for that reason, and we're improving the ramps within the intersection, we're also tying up into Montrose Ave, and then also a ramp by the, updated ramps by the Farm Street intersection, so there's a lot of hand spokes that are looking to walk to both of the schools on Farm, which we think is a big positive. Besides that, we're also working on Montrose for an infill sidewalk, so there was a series of cul-de-sacs that are on the, that would be my north-hand side, north-hand side of Montrose, and what they had is, you know, requested to, basically to be allowed to walk to school. So we did this, you know, fairly short run that will have some crossing spots for folks to get across to the sidewalk on the southern side, and this allows basically more folks within the Montrose neighborhoods to be able to get to school, so we cover, at this point we cover all the neighborhoods, I believe, at that point, there may be one street further down, but that was, that, there's some, I think it was some elevation constraints that would require a much larger project for that, but, so that work is ongoing, they've stripped a good chunk of it, ramps have been installed as of last week, getting there, moving forward with that. Moving on from there, they're going to look at, so we have a small section of infill sidewalk on Myrtle, that would include a crosswalk to get over Cooper Street and the bridge, that's the next project that they're going to move to after they're done with Montrose, and then we have the JJ Round and Mapleway Playgrounds, some new paved crosswalks to get to the playgrounds, that was a request from our Disability Commission, I want to say about a year ago or so, so we rolled it into this project as well to make that happen. And then spring is going to be probably Nahat Street as the major one that starts on April Vacation, so because of the school and how tight Nahat is, that's going to be very difficult with school going on to install that. Similar idea as to what we're doing on Montrose, so, you know, the streets that are on the southern side, they don't have access to the sidewalk that's on the northern side, so we kind of reverse, allow folks to get across and walk to the high school and the elementary school. Parker and Elm Street, we expect the majority of that to happen next year, but there is a possibility that they start to nibble away at that depending on weather, so they've expressed a desire to do that, and they have moved very fast, so that might end up happening. As I was developing the slide last week, you know, we've had dialogues since then, so that's kind of the more up-to-date.
Councilor Smith-Gowden?
With all this great sidewalks work happening particularly around the schools, and maybe this isn't here, but we had the Traffic Advisory Committee here, and I know that there are new school zones and new signage and crosswalks, I really haven't seen a lot of that.
You haven't, so
When is that happening?
That's a big cost, so the cost to do the signage was around $10,000, so we went after a Safe Roots to School signs and lines program, trying to say that fast, so, yes, that's what we're going after, so $10,000, a little shy of that for the signed stock for our guys to then install it, so that's
So what are we looking at, like, I guess I'm under the impression when we approve that, that it was going to happen fairly quickly?
Yeah, so we went to, so we got, we, you know, went out to get the cost for it, we're waiting on the results of the grant, which should be happening within the next month, and then our folks would be able to pick away at that as soon as, as soon as we get the okay from the state.
I did see like an old 20 mile an hour side, looks like it got put up recently, so maybe we found some in the garage too, okay, as soon as we can get those up, I mean, I think that, you know, there was a lot of excitement about that, and I think there was hope that it would happen before school started, but, I guess my other question I'm going to bring up, and Steve, you and I have talked about this, with the Parker Street sidewalks happening, I know there's a fight with DOT about the lighting at that underpass at Parker, but I really think that we as a town should be thinking about how to put a light up there, it's the safety of our kids who are walking to school on Parker, and I talked to Bill this week about it as well, I know there's, you know, the DOT says that they don't, they never put in, maybe the light department did it, I don't know what the solution is, but I feel like we should be able to throw up a few lights for the safety of our kids to walk to school under that overpass, especially now that they have safe sidewalks.
Yep.
Something for your list.
Agreed, we all agree, I think.
Yep.
And just as a follow-up to that question, so in the event that we don't get the grant for the signage, I assume we are still moving ahead with the signage for the zones that we've approved as a council?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm all in favor of going for the grants, but I don't want that to be a limiting factor to make sure that we have, you know, signage in areas where it's appropriate to do so.
I would imagine if we don't hear relatively shortly, the vendor already has everything we need
Yep.
We just need to execute the order and make it happen, so all the sites have been marked, our staff is aware what's going in, what it's going to take, so, once we get the, you know, get out of the gate and get it going in short order, it will come up pretty fast.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and good job getting a grant, hopefully we do, thank you.
Fingers crossed. All right, so Rail to Trail and Envision, so kind of combine those into one large project, so if you recall, we had, we started with some, Rail to Trail Trailheads project that started earlier in the spring this year, where we did some curb ramp work as well as the split around, so folks aren't driving down there, we have some bollards and sections as well, we right now are still just waiting, our contractor is going to be installing a new granite obelisk that's in the main Richardson Bennett Park area that's there, so that'll look, that should look pretty sharp, I think, once that's completed, we're expecting that to happen this month. The big holdup for us right now is MBTA lease agreement, so we've been working, I've been working on that for the better half of a year and getting bounced around, worked with Mr. Mullin on that as well, we brought on a special council that deals specifically with Rail to Trails, I've actually worked with them in my Concord days for one of the Rail to Trails I did there, so that is ongoing dialogue with MBTA, as of late last week, we were pinging emails back and forth, so hopefully we can get the overall lease completed, that would be something that comes back to you, if you recall, we, back in, predates me, so I want to say 2015 or so, town meeting approved an article to allow the council to go enter into a lease agreement, so really it's a matter of getting the language from MBTA that's satisfactory to our council and getting that to you eventually, so that's basically where we sit on that, that'll allow us at least open up the stretch that National Grid is installed, so that's why you see those gates are there, that's the reason that they're there, because they are, we are not open to the public at this time, although some folks have been using it, but, you know, the reason that that's gated off is because we basically don't have a lease agreement for the town to actually use it as a public path yet. Moving on to the overall Envision and Rail to Trails, so other portions of our Rail to Trail has been dovetailed with our Envision project, so what we did is split the project into two projects, and both have been funded on either the State Transportation Improvement Program or the TIP, which is our, which is the, how the, our folks at the state disperse the federal monies that come down to us, so we are in the process right now, so actually I should say, the section from, that will include the Rail to Trail, Water Street, and what was called Lower Main
South Main.
South Main, is that what we call it? Yeah.
Such that from Water Street to Nahat Street, North Ave.
Right, so that whole portion is on the 2026 TIP, so we're in the process right now on that project to submit our Stage 1 Intersection Control Evaluation Scopes, this is a new step that MassDOT has added to these projects, where they're trying to improve safety at every intersection, so every intersection within these projects have to get a filing that go in there, we have different stages that they have to look at for our, for that stretch, we're in Stage 1 review right now, and that basically tells what we're looking at for more detailed review, we get consensus with MassDOT on which ones would require more detailed review, so that submitted should be going in within, I want to say within a month or so, and then, you know, we're going to look to dovetail, once we get the ICE submittals through and keep moving those forward, we're going to start looking into our design and public hearing, I'm expecting that to be late winter, early spring timeframe, somewhere in that range, that may slide depending on MassDOT's responses to us and what other information that they ask for. As the, as we get into the ICE evaluations, there are redesigns that are asked and different scopes and concepts that are submitted to them, those will be coming back to you folks as soon as we have consensus on which ones we're doing the more detailed analysis to. So that's what you'll hear coming, you will probably hear something fairly soon on the other stretch for the 2028 TIP, that one has already gone through the first stage and we're moving into the second stage of our ICE on that, so jumping to that, so that's our North and Middle Main section, if you recall from our meetings from back in the day, so, you know, we're thinking, you know, prior to submitting our Stage 2, we would have a town council meeting to review the different options, they're looking at roundabouts, they're looking at signal changes, intersection realignments, all those different types of things, I've seen a couple of them from our consultant that I'm not a fan of, that we've already kicked back, so you'll see sort of a, I think, more palatable proposals that would come in the next few months.
Bill, when you say our consultant, are you referring to the $1 million in ARPA that the town council, is that part of this?
That was the first, the first one I was presenting to, so that's E, the Rail to Trail Envision component, right?
Rail to Trail, okay.
Yeah, so that is Rail to Trail, Water Street, and South Main, that consultant is the $1 million in ARPA.
Okay, and what is being envisioned for South Main in this chart?
For South Main?
What is actually being done?
At this point, we're in the same layout that we had originally, that was presented by VHB back in the day, so we've carved that off and done it as a separate project with a different consultant because we were able to expedite and get it on the 26 TIP, so that's what the goal was, so, looking at it, now that we've done a little bit more analysis So, looking at it, now that we've done a little bit more analysis and kind of looking more into the plans, I think we did a little disservice on the, what I would call the western side of the street, so opposite the Galvin. We kept it with really small sidewalks, which I don't think really make a ton of sense based on the kid-ped traffic that I see, just in my day-to-day driving around. So, I think we'll look at how we're repurposing the lanes, and, you know, we still had that middle island that was in there, so that'll all stay, but, you know, how we repurpose the pavement and the cross-section. So, I'm expecting to come in with some proposed, you know, tweaks to that to kind of enhance pedestrian connectivity on the other side of the street.
So, is there a more detailed, you know, rendition of what we're looking at right now? I mean, if you drill down, like on the website, do you get piece by piece here?
You can get the piece by piece, yeah. So, it really, I mean, from where we were with VHB a couple of years ago, we're sort of, we're in a holding pattern because we were not on the tip. So, that, this has all kind of happened within the last year or so. So, we've got contracts, contracts together for, for advancing our projects through 25% design for our, our Middle Main and Upper Main sections. So, that contract gets us through 25% design. The ARPA portion for the other project is funded all the way through completion to construction.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Smith-Galton?
Are we still using VHB as the contractor?
VHB is covering the 2028 TIP portion, so the Middle Main and Upper Main.
And who's covering the earlier one then?
That's going to be the Rail to Trail consultant. So, that was WorldTech. WorldTech has been acquired by Ty &amp; Bond, so it gives us a little bit more resources on the environmental side, which we have a good amount of environmental on that project, so it's a positive for us.
Thank you.
Advancing to, let's see, we already talked about that. And then, some of the stuff that we're looking at for 2024, so, we are looking at our 2024 Roads Program, planning, designing, construction. Those scopes of work are in the process right now. We typically don't publicize our road selections until we've done our due diligence, so that's our coring of the roads in our surveys, so we understand what we can build. So, we're not over-promising and under-delivering. We want to make sure we're doing the exact opposite of that. We have our II Sewer Inflow Project, where we're just removing flow from our, from our sewer system to reduce the amount of money that we're paying in sewer fees to MWRA. We do pay to treat clean groundwater in our sewer pipe if it gets in, so that's something we are mandated to do. They offer some programs for funding to help soften the blow on that. So, we, we're moving forward with that project. Our remediation is in design and permitting, and I expect to get into construction through, through the remainder of this fiscal. Drainage project improvements, so we had an article for Vernon to Daniel that was, that was approved, I want to say, last year. So, we're in the process right now of design and permitting for that. Construction, I'm expecting over the winter. It's more, going to end up being more of a lining project as a, as a direct dig and replace. So, we're able to save some costs on that and then expand the drainage money into some additional projects, which is a positive for us. That's Field Parking Lot and Bathroom, we're going to talk about that in a bit. And our Greenwood, Green, and Oak Shared Streets. So, Shared Street Grant is, closes at the end of the month. We're proposing that. The upper rendering in the upper right-hand corner shows one of the proposals. So, we're looking to green up a section of it, tee up the intersections, and add a three-way stop for, for Greenwood, Oak, and allow essentially the creation of a little pocket park in that area. So, we looked at a couple of different options. There was a roundabout option that we were proposing initially. We had a bunch of feedback from the residents out there, they weren't big fans of that design. So, we have, we have pulled an audible on that, and this is what we're at now, which we believe is the consensus plan. We'll kick it out to the folks to review that again, and then be looking to construct probably as part of our Roads Program bid next year. And our Trainhorn, our Trainhorn side, quad gates at Broadway, something else that we're looking to move forward with. That project, if you recall, we received an earmark from Congressman Moulton's office to have that happen. 1.3 million. We are in the process of procuring our, our design engineer for that specialized service. There was some delay in that, in advancing it, just due to semantics at the state level. So, the MBTA wouldn't sponsor the project even though it's on their rail system, which was pretty amazing. So, they ended up kicking it to MassDOT, so it took some time to get through the MassDOT process for us to be on, but that is going to be a TIP project as well, so that'll be dovetailed within the TIP, but not really as a town project. It's going to be a MassDOT project, which leaves us opportunities for additional TIP projects, which we'll be looking at in the near future. One of the ones I'm eyeing is some additional signal work within the town to upgrade some of these signals, try to combine them all into one larger project and have the state fund those. All right, that is what we have going on.
It's just a small amount.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a lot, for sure, so...
If I may, so I apologize, this did not make the presentation in time, but we did get some word. As many of you know, we've been pursuing, you know, a complete rehab of the Soldiers' and Sailors Monument. We're under contract with a firm that's going to be doing that for us. We met with them on-site. They had some work they're wrapping up, believe it or not, on the Capitol Building in Washington. They have informed Ann in our office that they're looking to come in and actually probably begin with some of the fencing. So, you should see probably the end of the month, beginning of November, we're going to actually take the first step forward in getting some work done on that and starting to rehab that, you know, great statue that we have that has not been touched in, you know, 121 years. So, that'll be coming out. As soon as it does come out, we will certainly leverage on the project viewer that Bill mentioned earlier. I have a couple of pictures of the original construction, but, you know, this is something kind of like the water tank where hopefully no one's touching it for another century, so we can make sure that we can document it along the way and keep that up there, you know, to keep people interested in return a fantastic project. So, don't be surprised if you start seeing that, and we bring more information to you soon.
Yeah, and then one other one, we did receive a grant for about $530,000, $40,000?
$42,000.
$542,000 for a new sidewalk on Hopkins Street, so we were...
$571.
$571, even more money, we love it. I don't know if Mr. Mayor had already let you folks know, but...
Yes.
So, that's a successful Mass Works grant that we were able to obtain with our Economic and Development Coordinator, Erin Kukinda helping me out big time on that, making that happen, so, so kudos to her. And, yeah, we got some more money from the Mass Works program, which is a positive.
Terrific, great work on, on all of this. Questions, additional questions or comments from the council that we haven't already covered? I have one just to ask. You know, one of the other projects I know that we talked about with ARPA funding is looking at some sort of trails through the woods by the lake on the, on the west-hand side of the lake. Any updates on, on progress on that in terms of planning?
Right, so my last update, I planned that as a fall project. So, we're incorporating the survey into our survey contract that we're, that we're procuring currently, and then our design will happen over the, over the fall timeframe, so...
Great.
We have some work, obviously, public outreach with the friends, they're aware of the project now, so we'll have some communications with those folks. And then, yeah, really, we're looking to make that happen as a, as a project in 2024.
Awesome, thank you.
But I think it'll probably be fiscal '25, though, is when it'll happen.
Great. Any other final questions? Well, I know we have you guys for a couple more items, but thank you. I mean, this is, I do want to stress, I mean, this is a lot of work happening in town. I know people see it and feel it in terms of detours and construction delays, which can be frustrating, but the fact that we have all of these projects going on, and the fact that there's a light at the end of the tunnel on some of these is really exciting to me. I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, as much as we don't like to see pavement on these slides where we see new sidewalks and resurfaced roads, that is really exciting. So, appreciate all the work that's gotten into it and all of the, again, the choreography that goes into, you know, getting materials and getting contractors and getting everything lined up so that we can, you know, do this as efficiently and seamlessly as possible.
Couldn't do it if it wasn't for my team, so it's definitely a shout-out to all those folks.
Great, well, thank you. Moving on to item 6D, speaking of sidewalks, we have an easement request for Elm Street, so I don't know...
I'm going to throw that back to Bill, if you don't want to...
Hey, there we go. So, this is, so this, we've done these in the past, they've come to you for certain sidewalks, so there'll be public sidewalks that, that end up on private property. So, when we were in the design for our Elm Street sidewalk, we were looking at the removal of a larger tree at, what number is it? It's 1 Edwards, which is at the corner of Edwards and Elm. Doing our public outreach that we do, so before we do any of these projects, we go out and have an onsite meeting where folks can point out things that they, we may have missed, or highlight something to us that they want to change or tweak. So, this is kind of one of those success stories where we were looking to take down a large tree, the resident didn't want that to happen. They were willing to give us an easement to allow the sidewalk to go around the back of it. That has gone through review with Mr. Mullin. The resident has already signed off on the easement, and it's before you tonight for, hopefully for approval.
So, do we have a motion to accept the easement for the sidewalk on Elm Street at the corner of Edwards?
Move to accept the easement or treesment on the sidewalk on Elm Street.
Seconded.
Any discussion or questions from the council? Seeing none, we can move to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it 7-0. Great, and thank you to the resident. It's great to be able to save that tree and still make sure we have an accessible sidewalk. Item number 6E, I believe we're staying, Bill and Joe, with you guys for the Hall Park restroom.
Sure, so I believe I have a separate slide deck for this. It's the same one from our public presentation, which happened last Thursday. Here we are. All right, so kind of fast-forwarding through this, so we heard, rather than kind of regurgitating what I already said, so we basically have three sites that we've identified. Site one being Hall Park, closer to the Farmer's Market, and I think we can kind of tweak where that actually sits. Number two, which was our preferred, because there was some savings in, in...
Utilities.
Thank you, thank you very much, Joe. Yeah, in utility installation, we already have a water service that goes there for a water bubbler. We were able to potentially reuse that, you know, that would be a savings there. Number three, kind of looks at moving it towards the back of the backstop. Again, really, the issue would be, you know, with two and three, we have a smaller size building. We are size constrained just because of where it's located, and we would have some savings, though, in utility costs. So, these kind of show you the different slides. Two would also be closer to ADA parking. We can do the same thing with one, where we can move the ADA parking to the other side. And, yeah, that's the site for the third one, and then we showed a bunch of different options, these different styles. You know, one of the things that I was a big proponent of was the overhang. We talked about that at the previous town council meeting, you folks were in favor of that. Since, since I heard your feedback on that, I've gone to the Historic Commission. They provided some additional feedback. So, they weren't big fans of the trellis look that was on the slide right now. They prefer to see more of a enclosed overhang if we go with that route. So, this kind of shows you what that overhang would look like in a, you know, kind of a real, in a real example, a real-world example. So, what we did, we also heard some requests for coloring. Requests were really for a gray, a gray building with a white trim that was, that was heard pretty clearly at the, at the Historic Commission by one of the residents that was on providing feedback, which personally, I think, makes a ton of sense. This would be my preferred color scheme, if we're asking my opinion. Looking at some of these other options with the gray and the white trim. We would envision something kind of closer to this as the look of the building, obviously not as deep if we were to put it into slots two and three. If we were to want to go with, with item number, location number one at Hall Park, we would have the ability to actually incorporate some of the store, or all of the storage for, for the Farmer's Market and essentially eliminate that trailer that's there and do that to facilitate the, you know, their, one building within the area that would obviously be larger but able to accommodate their, their use currently. Just a bunch of different facade options that they looked at. This one has more of a wall in between. I think most of the folks weren't big fans of that at the public meetings, so I don't think that's something we would go. We'd do more of a post look to it, something like that, but with the different color scheme, with the gray and the white. We also talked about kind of rehabilitating the parking lot. You know, we have currently these three, these three handicap spots that are located in the, at the curb area. They block our maintenance access to Floral Way and to the, and to the Betsfield area. So, we would look to realign, so that's the thing I was just talking about with the, where the, where the access is impaired by the, by the configuration of the spaces. We also have this gravel area, that's a stone-dust area that's rutted and essentially is a, is a solid puddle most of the time, and, you know, definitely not ADA compliant currently. And then, we have these three funky spaces that I don't know how you park there. So, those, we're looking to kind of basically fix within a reconstruction. So, talking about those funky spaces, you can see them, we look to essentially extend the, the middle area, so you get those two spots out on the outside, and then reconfigure to incorporate a new bioretention area in the middle. We would also add a new flush concrete walkway to delineate the walkway for folks that are going to go to Hall Park from, from either the bleachers or from walking on Floral Way, similar to what we just talked about on Montrose app. We were looking at a Paver Plaza area where the, where the puddling is today. That would allow kind of something like this. We have used this in a couple of different locations. This is a project that I completed many moons ago, and we kind of carried that theme into other locations within the town that I was working in, which was, I thought was a great-looking aesthetic. We've added four parking spaces up in those locations to expand, so we're adding, I believe, I can't read the slide, but I believe I'm adding four more spaces with all of this. Also adding in two new compliant ADA spaces towards the bleachers. Based on the size, we're supposed to have, we have three now, we're supposed to have four. We're also required to have a van-accessible space, we didn't have that either, so we're kind of configuring all of those in with this project. And that's basically what I have, so I'm happy to answer any questions on this. Obviously, we've got a good chunk of feedback, I think, from Historic Commission and obviously at the public meeting, so I'm happy to answer any questions for you folks.
Just one question to kick it off before I ask the counselors, but we had talked, I think, in our last meeting about this, about, you know, potentially location number two as, you know, at least sort of an early thought, you know, sense of the council as the preferred location. There was some feedback in the public hearing around location number one. Do you have a census to the cost difference between those two options, given the utilities issue?
Absolutely, so that, to add that in, we're looking at a little shy of $300,000 increase. So, we were sitting around $150 for the smaller-sized bathroom. We think we can fit it all within the current budget. So, if you wanted to expand that size, one of the things we were looking at was, you know, with, with some of the extra dollars, is we'd be looking at replacing some of the walkways that are in Hall Park, because, you know, they're past their useful life, trip hazards, all that type of stuff. So, we were planning on incorporating that in it. We also have, you know, the cost for the drainage and cost for other things within the project, but, you know, we typically can bid these with our Roads Program, so we're able to get a much better cost because we have a much larger chunk of work being done. So, you know, we, we think we can make that happen if that's what we're looking for. Water service is probably about another $20 to $25, adding in the curb stops and the different configurations that we need to have. Aside from that, everything else stays status quo.
So, all told, just to make sure I understand, so the difference between option two and option one is option, or site one is another $300,000 because of the larger building and the, the water service that needs to be moved?
Yeah, and that is if we're incorporating in the same-sized building that, you know, the same amount of space that the Farmer's Market has today.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, we're thinking garage door on the back and much larger open space. We'd still have some, some space for ourselves that would be carved off for Public Works to do our maintenance stuff and for our, you know, the different, you know, janitorial supplies and all that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council?
Councilor Nebraska.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this. I agree, it seemed like there was more of a consensus for, for site one or option one at the meeting, albeit that there were like 12 to 15 people there, so I wouldn't say it was, it wasn't 200 people who were commenting on that. After the meeting, I had occasion to just go by this site and take some pictures, because I thought that it was important for people, you know, when you're kind of envisioning this, because it seems like a big structure. this, because it seems like a big structure. So I have three pictures that I've sent in, this being one of them, this is current conditions, so when you think about that, that store, that painted storage container in comparison to what is really kind of just overgrowth right now, I mean, while it's, it's natural, it's, it's quite large, and I think you tend to forget that sometimes, so when we're looking at these other structures, and if we could move to the other two photos, if they can come up as well, you know, that's, that's a big footprint already of overgrowth and that container, so I'd venture to say that, and I think we have maybe one more, and I'd venture to say that even if we ended up with that larger, that larger facility that could house the storage that we're talking about and the like, I'm not, I'm not convinced that the footprint is going to be all that different than currently existing conditions.
Yeah, from that large bush, definitely, so we'd be looking at a 24 to by 26 foot building, so we'd be adding on another, I want to say 17 feet or so from what would be proposed if we were in the other locations, or if we decided to retain the container and, you know, have, you know, two, two structures or items, whatever you want to call it there.
Because I do think that in looking at this, the larger, the slightly larger facility ends up allowing for the storage, as you point out, I think it cleans up the area in a way that should be, you know, right now, I mean, it's, I don't think it's particularly attractive right now when you're looking at that space despite the fact that it's, you know, right on the lake, and like, looking at that side view especially, I can't, I can't envision a bathroom with sort being much deep, much deep, deeper than that probably, right?
It's about the same, I think it looks just kind of eyeballing it, you know, this wasn't something I was, you know.
I apologize, thanks to the control room, I just like, I texted these in a little while ago.
Yeah, I would have, I definitely would have measured it out for you, but, yeah.
No, 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 no.
It's, I think, just eyeballing it, it appears to be pretty close.
But I mean, that was, like, my point being that what's there now, it's not like we're putting a structure on an open space, what is there now from a height perspective, you know, from a size perspective, and obviously it's two different, it's a structure and another natural structure that feels like something large, so I think it helps to give people a little bit of context about if we were to put something, you're probably looking at around that same kind of footprint, but something that's obviously better maintained, I imagine landscaped and all the rest as you're talking about.
Sure.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, Councilman Klein?
More comment, because I was, you know, I'm down there virtually daily and saw you in your truck the other day, and when I was talking to town council, he was taking his walk after I was standing there staring at the view, and I think the view is extremely important at the lake, and as you come down church, this sits back, whereas the building we had originally envisioned would have been in the line of vision, I think, more, and also to these comments, that that, you know, combination of a structure and brush, or bush, or whatever it may be.
Whatever that is.
Whatever that thing is, is already, is already pretty large, and same thing from, from North Ave, as you're around the bend, you know, you, you can look at the ballpark, you can see the lake, you can see through the stands, so you still have more of a view, and I, you know, it's hard to quantify that to me in terms of dollars, and I think it's nice that we would be able to then incorporate the, the storage for the farmer's market because we've, I think, as, as a council, we've made a commitment that, you know, we intend to support the farmer's market to the greatest extent possible. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm in favor of number one as well.
Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines, and with this picture up, it's good for me to ask this question, if we went to the first location, those two first parking spaces right there that are vacant at the moment, they, the ADA spaces could go there?
Of course.
They would just go from the other side over there?
Yeah, we would just redesign how the walkways work and how, what the grading is over there, but yeah, we can definitely make that happen.
All right, thank you. Councilor Dennehy?
Yeah, I was just going to say is that I, you know, I, rethinking after the public hearing and thinking about this, and the pictures are super helpful, so thank you. I like the visibility, is the visibility point of being able to sightline of the lake is better with option one, I think, and I think that incorporating the storage container into the, into the new structure will just kind of tidy things up, so I would, I think I'm in favor of one, I think that it makes more sense.
Councilor Smith Galvin?
So I don't know whether that's a tree or a bush, but I'm not, I mean, I guess my question is, I imagine all three of these sites are in the flood plain?
No, so just the back half of the site is, so if I'm looking at, actually I can't really jump back, so if you're looking at the, where that, the circle area is, a little bit of that section is in the flood.
So will this have to go to conservation commission?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I would want their opinion on what that vegetation is doing there, if any, if anything, whether it's doing anything for flood control, because I think they are the subject matter experts on it, so I'm, I'm really fine with any of the three sites, I'm perfectly happy with one as long as, you know, we're not taking out, you know, something that's having some flood control. I did hear at the public meeting that, you know, there were thoughts about solar, so I think that was a good idea.
So I will interject just a tiny bit, option two and option three, personally I have reservations about solar in those options because of the proximity of the bleachers. If option one is the favorite option, it would do me great pleasure to try to get another kit for free.
Okay.
So I think the other way, you know, not being able to turn off the panels and knowing that you're going to have, you know, different age groups that may have a tendency to be a little rambunctious, gives me a little bit of angst.
So I was, I was assured that soft balls do not break PV panels, but I hadn't thought of the rambunctious.
I think if you, if you utilize option one, it's a no brainer to try to accomplish that.
So that's, that's another good, so that's another good place for that, and then, I know we talked about it here, but I'm, it's, it's great we're adding parking spaces, I just don't want to forget about bike parking as well as part of this redesign.
Councilor Buck?
Sorry, yeah, thank, thank you for this, and thank you for the public hearing, I think people are getting to weigh in, I just, I, I think we're, we're doing great work on making kind of a welcoming place at the lake even more, I think each year we kind of improve it more, and I think this will be really helpful. I got a text this weekend from our friend from Boston who came to use our pickle ball courts, and then, which makes Steve really happy.
I was trying to look at the ARPA funds, I was trying to remember how much ARPA funds we put in. Good thing what I was showing you before didn't come up.
So I, I think we're, you know, I think this, the bathrooms are so needed at the lake, I'm really glad that we're prioritizing this, I'm, I echo what Councilor Smith Galvin said about the conservation commission, I also, so did I hear correctly that site one's $300,000 more?
Site one, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'd like, like, before we, we make a decision, just kind of knowing the cost, because that's, that's significant, I don't think that's in the ARPA funding, so I just, I would want to weigh all where we could redo, where we could do solar, because of the water, yeah.
No, 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 the reason that it's more expensive is because it's a much larger building to accommodate the, the farmer's market, but that's, it's just square footage cost of building the building.
If, honestly, if the project comes down to the water, be it make or break, we'll get the water in with no question, so that is the least of your concern, we, that's what we do.
It puts, it ends up putting us tight to the, to the budget that we already have, and then it really doesn't allow us to do some of the other work that probably is needed in the area, but we could potentially look at other ARPA funds in the future for that, or we can, as I'm into the design and I get my updated quotes and pricing, we, you know, if there's a, if there's a need for some additional funds, you know, I'm, I'm happy to come back here to present.
So I think what I, if I can jump, I think what I heard was that the building could be handled within the 300, within the current appropriation, but the extra work and those other pathways could not.
Yeah, the pathways are probably what goes, because we're doing the parking lot for sure, right, so we're going to, we have to reclaim and regrade that to be able to get the water into the new treatment system before it hits the lake, so that's kind of one of the big parts of the project, obviously, so I don't see us moving that, you know, we'll try to get better pricing by, by potentially carving some of this off into other contracts, you know, it can be a little.
You're talking about the pathways more, more down?
In Hall Park.
In Hall Park, away from Beth's?
Yeah.
Heading towards the cemetery.
Heading towards the cemetery, okay.
I mean, anybody that kind of looks at it, right, this, the nucleus, this whole thing started at the floral way, it's kind of working its way clockwise around the lake, so this project's going to get done, it's going to be built, and then naturally your eyes are going to transition to that next intermediate piece, so those pathways, like if you have the parking lot there, could probably stand to have a little bit of a redesign, some effort put in there, there's also a potential opportunity at Beacon Street, do a little bit more stormwater treatment down there, so, you know, what have, not, what might not be now, it will eventually naturally probably gravitate into, you know, another option down the road, so.
Great, does that answer your question?
It does, yep.
Can I just add one point, just, and I know Council Nebraska, you have another, another comment, with the storage container, if we do move ahead with option one, one of the things I want to be mindful of is the storage container also is a piece of public art, and the mural, you know, for a storage container, it's actually a really nice storage container in terms of the mural that was painted, and so if there's any way that we could look at preserving or providing other opportunities for a similar mural or similar public art, I, I would ask if we could look at that as well.
Sure.
Again, if we do move ahead with, with option number one in terms of the sighting. Sorry, Councilor Nebraska.
Do I have to, Mr. Chairman? I think from, obviously the, the numbers have to work here, and we, we don't want to be building something that's, you know, beyond our reasonable means, it's, my understanding is that we can also look in-house for some of this stuff, right? Director Conway?
We are in the business and we'll do whatever it takes.
Yeah, so I mean, so that, so we can realize some cost savings there as well, and then, and what you're talking about, Mr. Renault, in terms of some of the, the work that would have been around the same area, we can, we'll try to realize cost savings or efficiencies there, just piggybacking on some of the other contracts, so we're not actually, so it's, it's not going to be $300,000 more ideally to do this.
Well, no, the $300,000 is definite, I mean, that's, that's, it's the square foot of the buildings.
For the, for the building, that's what it costs, right?
So we're increasing it by about 400 square feet, so, you know, that's, that's a standard cost, so some of the other things I would have spent that $300,000 on, it's like improving other paths in the areas as part of the project, that's what would potentially be deferred.
Because the building itself would be 300, but it's not 300,000 more to do this.
To do the bigger building, yes, yeah.
So we're, we're doing less than the original scope.
Oh, no, 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 I understand, so, yeah.
I think that's an important distinction for people, because they're thinking it's got, now we're adding $300,000 onto this building to get it to have this building.
The larger, the larger building, there'll be a slight trade-off where you might not get those pathways, you know, essentially from the light department as far as you may have taken it initially, but, you know, like I said, that's something that, you know, naturally your eyes are going to focus towards that next, so Bill's group is very aggressive with looking at grants and things like that, so if it pauses temporarily, you know, I don't think it gives.
Because I, that's the point, people watch it so they understand, that, yes, the building would be 300,000 because it's 400 square feet larger, but that means some of the other aspects, some of the other ancillary projects would have to be reduced or otherwise be more creatively funded.
Funded.
But that, that, you know, again, grants, whatever the case might be, but it's not as if by moving to this location, it's just costing 300,000 more inherently, it's just the building itself is, is what's driving, because, because the cost, if we didn't have the extra 400 square feet, would be, how much for the building?
We were going to use the budget.
Okay, okay.
And expand it to cover all the walkways that are in the area and, you know, make sure that we, that the money would have been spent, we might have had a little bit left over.
Okay, okay, I just think that's an important distinction for folks and what they're watching. Thanks.
Councilor Smith Galvin?
Just a quick question, it's probably too late for the design on this one, but is there any advantage to permeable asphalt in some of these parking lots around the lake?
Well, that's what I was proposing with the, with the papers.
With the, but that, but not the whole parking lot?
So I am not a proponent or a supporter of, of that, I've gone to so many seminars on it, and every single one that I've seen as a demonstration project falls apart. I've done demonstration projects myself to try it out and see if it's just, you know, the folks that were doing those projects didn't have great quality control, so even doing it myself, it still fell apart, so they're just, they're, it's actually, parking lots are probably the worst way to use it because you have to turn your wheels, and so that, you don't have that density, right, so there's a stone that makes up pavement, right, so you have pavement and then like an asphalt that, and liquid asphalt that helps to bind it together, so it's more sticky, that's the idea, is what's supposed to happen, but as you turn your wheels on it, they, it just disintegrates, and I've had very, very bad luck with it.
Worth the question.
Yeah, I wanted to nerd out of that.
I have to say, between civil engineering and, you know, neuroscience, we've learned a lot today.
We have learned a lot.
Any other final questions or comments before we entertain a motion? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we, that the town council requests that the Department of Public Works and our engineering department move forward with option one, location for a larger building with storage, seeking whatever appropriate approvals they need from the conservation commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
You're going to like the motion, we can revert it.
I think we go to conservation first before we pick a location, no?
I, I could interject, I, I don't think that's going to be a huge hurdle personally, just in my experience in working with them, so, if that helps the council.
So I think we need to give direction to the engineering department on a strategy. If for whatever reason the conservation commission comes back and says this site doesn't work, I would expect that you would come back to us and we would look at other options, but I do think we need to give you sort of an official guidance to say you have permission to look at a building on this location.
It would also be helpful to understand the aesthetic too, so that moving forward today with all the decisions would be terrific.
So you would like the aesthetics, the gray and white and the post as part of the motion?
Gray and white and the overhang, and if you're good with that, that's what we'll build.
So Mr. Reclay, do you want to amend your motion to say that the, the, the building would be painted gray with white trim and an overhang is presented to the historic commission?
That sounds like exactly what I was going to say.
I assume it's amenable, Councilor Smith, you as the second?
Seconded.
Great, any further discussion?
I, I just would like, like, moving forward, I think I just would like a better cost analysis of what we're not going to, like, what we're doing with the funding, so what that'll buy us, and then, like, the whole project, not just the, not just the area and the extra shed, because I think, I hear you that you will get it done and I trust your team will get it done, I think I just need to see a little, like, the next time the proposal with a little bit numbers and more specifics if we can get that, that would just be helpful for me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, so the motion on the table is to authorize, please?
I should just say that we've, we've appropriated 800,000 for this project, just as an FYI.
And we have an earmark for 75,000.
Right, on top of that.
On top of that.
So when we're, when we're thinking about this in total, just for context, and that's, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for pulling that up.
Yep.
So we're at least, it's, we're at least 875,000, all of that.
Correct. Other questions or comments? Yep, Councilor Dennehy?
So what is the cost estimate now, like approximately?
So when you originally appropriated the funding for it, we provided you cost estimates on all the projects, some of the ARPA funds in our requests, so our project scope was at the total, so we were at 875,000.
So we are still planning to spend the 875,000 that was appropriated between ARPA and the earmark, the scope of what we will be able to do, it sounds like we had sort of aspirations to do repave some of the paths in Hall Park going up to the cemetery, but it sounds like some of those additional elements beyond the parking lot and the restroom might be de-scoped, but we still have the budget, you expect to do the larger restroom, the parking lot, and then just the, some of the cleaning up of, of kind of the end of floral way into the parking lot?
Exactly.
And so to do the pathways would be approximately how much to, if we wanted to do?
To go, so my intent was to just go until I ran out of money for the pathways, so at this point I didn't, I didn't use that number, I didn't get that number.
Might be something to consider later.
Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines, just to clarify the structure itself, so we gave you the color, we gave you an overhang, you also indicated earlier that the desire was to have the posts and not the dividers from the historical commission, so that's part of it too, as part of the motion.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem, yes.
I would just also remind us that when we talked about earmarking these dollars from ARPA, it was, the main intent was always for the bathroom facility, everything else was as much as you can, as, as far as you can make the money go, but I think we're still accomplishing what, what the, the primary intent is here.
I think it was the restroom facility and the parking lot.
I'm sorry, and the parking. Right, exactly, my, right, exactly, but I mean, those, that was the, that was the focus, and I think everything else was make the dollars go a little further, and now we just have to be a little more creative and make those dollars go further because those are still what you, what you have planned were important projects.
All right, seeing no other comments, so let me restate the motion, so the motion is to authorize the Department of Public Works to move ahead with planning an eventual construction for a restroom facility to be located at site number one, with that facility to include storage for the farmer's market, to be designed with white siding and, I'm sorry, gray siding and white trim, thank you, with the overhead and the post-construction style as presented. All right, everyone's clear on the motion? Sherry, I hope that was helpful. We'll move to a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? The eyes have it seven zero. Thank you very much, this is really exciting. This is really exciting. You know, this is a project that I know a lot of us have been very excited about for a while, and this is a big step. And I look forward to both seeing sort of our final designs and starting to see a building next spring.
Sounds good. We appreciate it. Thank you for the support as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd love to say, a department where I'm calling them all the time, you know, seven days a week, sorry, guys, but they always pick up the phone.
Well, you and a lot of residents, too. And so it's a busy, busy department. All right, item number 6F, the 40A Committee. And thank you, Mr. Hogan and Ms. Kikinda, for waiting as long as you have.
Again, I get out of bedtime, so I'm one happy camper.
We're here to serve.
Yes, thank you. So I'll just kick this off. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. We're back for an update, and I'm really going to just be passing this over to Jim. And I'm really here for the technical questions that might arise when it comes to numbers and figures. But we just are here to give you an update on kind of where we're at with our 40A MBTA Community Working Group and what our game plan is moving forward. And so with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Jim, who's been doing all a lot of this hard work. So, Jim?
So thank you, everyone, for for listening to us. Just for those of the members of the public who don't know, my name is Jim Hogan. I'm the vice chairman of Wakefield Planning Board, as well as the chairperson for the Wakefield Working Group that has been convened to discuss the Section 3A MBTA communities' requirements for the town of Wakefield.
Yes.
So for those of you who don't know what this is, this is a high-level summary. We've got a proposed multifamily district that's been required due to a law that was passed by the state called Section 3A or 40A. It's also known as the MBTA Community Multifamily District. The proposed multifamily district that we're required to pass by the state allows for multifamily housing as of right based on a number of criteria with Wakefield calls from the state. The district that we're proposing is centered around Wakefield Junction, and it excludes commercial lots along North Ave, Main Street, and Albion Street, which we can get further into in the presentation. The district that we are proposing right now in the working group is compliant with the state law.
The airline.
So just for those who those people who may not be as into the weeds of zoning, so what we're talking about when we say as of right, it's a development that may proceed without requiring some sort of special permit, variance, zoning amendment, or other discretionary zoning approval. The discretionary is an important component. It's you're allowing people to build a multifamily unit without having to get a special permission, essentially. Multifamily, in this case, as defined by the state, means three or more units. We'll get into what we're proposing later on in the presentation. And then a special permit is a discretionary, which means you could deny a proposed development on the basis that it had more units than what was allowed. The flow chart probably isn't necessary for people at for this stage, but there's kind of a baseline of how the flow chart of zoning works in terms of the existing proposed for multifamily district within multifamily development within Wakefield. So what if Wakefield doesn't comply? As I mentioned, this is something that the state passed the law, Section 3A, requiring this. What it means for Wakefield is we do not comply with this in the timeframe that's allotted, that Wakefield will lose access to a number of discretionary grants. Some of the ones that the state initially talked about when this was published back in 2020 were the Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Programs. When we originally looked at this proposal, the Wakefield had received $3.6 million from these programs within the last three years. It sounds as if we just had a big win for over half a million dollars.
That would fall into some of these projects, yeah.
So it could be a significant financial impact. In addition, since the 2020 guidance, in the March of this year, an additional 14 programs are added to this list that would be you would not be eligible for if you did not comply with this statute. The Attorney General's also threatened kind of a more vague legal action against communities that don't comply. So there's some real consequences. For reference, for members of the town council and members of the public, we have to pass this district by the end of 2024 in order to be in compliance. So what is what are we actually being required to do by the state? Required to pass a district that multifamily is allowed as of right and based on some math that we don't need to get into in the group, but the high level is we need to pass a district that allows a little under 1,700 units as of right. Minimum acreage for Wakefield would be 114 acres. The one of the key components is that you have to have a minimum allowable density of 15 units per acre, which is very important for some of the other math that is being impacted by this. And you have to cite it within a half mile of the any MBTA-related infrastructure, in Wakefield's case, our two commuter rail stations. The district cannot have age restrictions, and it has to be suitable for families with children, i.e., you can't say that it has to be all studios. Again, as a reminder, for this case, a multifamily district is a building with three-plus units. So what do we actually have in Wakefield today? Right now, Wakefield does not have any zoning district where as of right multifamily is allowed. We do have a number of districts where you can apply for a special permit, those discretionary permits where you can have multifamily. But, you know, two-thirds of the land in town is zoned for single families only. And but you do have two-family residents that are allowed, technically not multifamily, but that next step up above the single, in a lot of the downtown type of business, business, neighborhood business, and general residence districts that we have. So what we what are we proposing? We're proposing on a multifamily district that's really centered around Wakefield Junction and extends past our downtown business area. You can see it's bound by North Albion and Main are kind of the nexus of the proposed district, and it also extends to either side of those those districts. What you're seeing right here on the screen is this is a the existing zoning that we have with the dark blue line that's dashed shows the existing or the proposed multifamily district. You can see there's a lot of overlap with our existing business or existing general residence zoning, which allows two-family as of right. What this district that we're proposing is four units as of right on the basis that if we had three, you wouldn't be able to meet that 15 units per acre based on the lots that exist. So that's a really key component. You'd have to have four units as of right within this district. So some of the other things, one of the ways that we wanted to think about this was we took a lot of the dimensional requirements associated with this proposed district, and we tried to, for lack of a better term, copy-paste a number of the setbacks, minimum lot sizes, building height maximums, as our existing mixed-use zoning, which the garden apartment, not the hot, the mid-high-rise zoning. Reason being is that that zoning is more appropriate for what we're talking about as of right, and because it's similar to existing zoning that we have on our bylaws in the books. That just happens to be a discretionary permitting permitting element. And then the final unit count for this proposed district would allow for 2,355 units as of right, and it allows for a density of 16.3, which is above, but not grossly so, above the 15 units that is the minimum.
And those are the two numbers that the state needs us to meet, that there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Yeah, and for some context, before we dive into the rest of this existing multifamily, we did look, because I know that I'm guessing a number of councils will ask, we did look at what would happen if we tried to have one of these zones around Greenwood Station. The problem is that on the base on the existing lots around Greenwood, they're larger than the ones that are around Wakefield Junction. So in order to meet that minimum density threshold, you'd have to allow six units per eight per lot as of right. We felt that was too much. We felt that it probably would make sense, separate from this requirement from the state, to revisit Greenwood, if we were interested in having some sort of allowable multifamily. But we felt as if it would be more appropriate to look at that without the restrictions from the state, because we could pass something that would be more akin to what we think is appropriate in that district. Felt six was just great, too, too much to allow as of right. What do we actually have? You know, this is these what we've done is we pulled up a couple houses that are existing kind of in these zones, just as an existing context. You know, on Pleasant Street, there's an existing house, you know, four units on a roughly 5,000-square-foot lot. There's an AV another 4,000, again, 4,300-square-foot lot. And Wakefield AV, you can see what it looks like with three units on a 5,000 and change square lot, a lot, and Avon Street for a 6,000-square-foot lot. So we anticipate that if this if this district, multifamily district is passed, this is the type of development you're likely to see. This was a unit that was completed on Chestnut Street in 2022. It's a three-unit on a, you know, roughly 7,000-square-foot lot. It's a little bit larger than the minimum that we have, but we anticipate that people may find, based on some of the other requirements that we have in this zoning, that they either want or would utilize larger lots than that they are minimum. But we'll time will tell, and I guess everything, anything, this is just zoning that needs to be put in place. It's not a production mandate by the state. The state's not saying you have to build X amount of housing, you just have to have capacity based in your zoning. So some additional development context, you can see this map shows the pins where all those different example properties of existing multifamily housing in Wakefield are currently residing. Some townwide stats, we have roughly 1,100 to 11,200 housing units per our last census. You know, the current housing units in this multifamily district that we're looking at according to residency is 1,641. Our minimum is 1,696, so we're pretty close to with our as-built stock at the bare minimum. The proposed housing units in this district that we've drawn is 200, in fact, 2,355. So the net of this is that an additional 714 units would be as of right above and beyond the existing housing stock, which represents about 6% of increase. So, you know, this is only this district only represents about 3% of Wakefield's land So reasons that we we made the decisions that we made as part of the working group for this proposed district, you know, we think that it's going to increase housing options near transit. The working group identified that, yes, the commuter rail is an important transit hub, but there's also some quality bus infrastructure along Main Street, kind of on the eastern side of this proposed district, that we also felt was important and would benefit from additional, I'll call it gentle density, rising the housing units that are around those transit hubs. We think that it's going to, over the long term, potentially increase housing option types by allowing some additional new development in multifamily, where we have a lot of single-family zones within the town right now, drive economic development by increasing foot traffic, really trying to cite it and really make it centered around our downtown business area, so we have more residents who can populate our downtown businesses and drive the economic development that we're so keen on. And provide, you know, we thought it was, you know, if we took all of this upzoning in terms of this gentle density and we put it directly adjacent to just the Wakefield commuter rail, we felt it was more advantageous to the town to spread it across when we have that quality bus infrastructure and to make it centered around our actual business development district as opposed to just the T-stop or the commuter rail stop. Implementation schedule, so tonight, we're here, and then over the next three months, the planning board's going to have a number of public forums. We're going to be looking to solicit feedback from the public on the proposed multifamily district, and we're going to be presenting to other various boards and committees that make up members of the working group, as well as potentially, we're in communication with Aaron, we're looking at other groups that in town, I understand that the Traffic Advisory, the Council on Aging may have some interest in having a presentation from us, and we're looking at some potential some other groups that maybe are interested in learning more. Disability is another one who's we've been talking about. So we're anticipating that, you know, through winter of '23, we'll be trying to solicit as much feedback from the public and from the members of this board as possible, which would allow us in late winter and early spring to incorporate any of those changes and get ready for a spring town meeting, trying to get that vote, because we have to get it through the December, the end of the year of '24 for the state deadline compliance. We felt that it would make a lot of sense, based on zoning and how focused everyone gets on it, that we would have the meeting in town, the meeting, spring town meeting. That way, if there was any issue with getting it passed, we would have a backup option to provide the town that amount of optionality. So in summary, the proposed multifamily district is in full compliance with the state zoning law. The district maintains Wakefield's eligibility for grants and provides competitive advantage for us for all other state grants that are outstanding. You know, they have indicated that they're going to be looking at what you pass for your Section 3A when they're comparing and deciding on which towns are awarded various state grants. It's going to provide opportunity for Wakefield to help the local and regional housing crisis. It's going to provide zoning that regulates reviews and guides growth, and then provide increased housing options for Wakefield residents. With that, for anyone who's on the call or wants to look at a future date, we do have a website, as well as this QR code that leads you to the where you can learn more as it relates to this process that's been ongoing. And I'm willing or ready to take any questions that the town council may have in terms of the proposed district. We have additional information if anyone wants to look in the appendix either now or at a later date for your reference. I know I went a little fast, and there's a lot being kind of being thrown at everyone, so I'm more than happy to take as many questions as anyone may have.
Well, thank you. I mean, this is a really thoughtful proposal, and, you know, every time we talk about this, one of the things that strikes me is the complexity around the math of figuring about, you know, how big the the zone has to be, how many units you have, how you sort of trade off the the required number of units with the density calculations. And obviously, there's been a lot of work that's gone into that, and I'm sure a lot of trial and error in some different options. I want to, Council Smith Galvin, I want to give you a chance just to make some comments since you are representative to the committee and would love to hear your color commentary.
Yeah, it's been an honor to represent the town council on this committee. I have learned a tremendous amount about zoning. And you're right, Chair Chines, that a lot of work has been put into this, there's been a lot of calculations, there has been many, many thoughtful discussions about it. You know, and it was a struggle kind of looking at Greenwood, and we even considered the Melrose train station, which actually, you know, you could do some you could do some zoning around kind of the Runwick Street area. So so we really, you know, put everything on the table in the first couple of meetings, and we have, you know, put forth this proposal that I really am proud of and that I think is consistent with what we hear from people and what we do in things like the master planning and supporting our downtown area. And so I look forward to working with everybody to try to move this towards town meeting in the spring.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Council McLean.
Jim, you know, I attended your last meeting, and we had some discussion, and I appreciated that, but I did want to ask you a couple of questions, perhaps somewhat similar to what I asked when I was at your meeting. Am I hearing that the Wakefield station area is four units as a matter of right?
That's correct.
Of the seven or so pictures that you showed, are any of those compliant? Would those be compliant under the new 40A, or do we not know? Would those be projects that would be 40A compliant projects under your proposal?
So the we don't 100% know, and there's a handful of decisions that we're going to have to make as it relates to minimum open space and parking spaces. Those are really the two main open questions. We've gotten some feedback from the town engineer that some of those existing projects would likely not be viable based on the fact that we are currently, by copy and pasting our the existing zoning associated with our multi or their mixed use, we require 30% of a lot to be open space, and we require one and a half parking spaces per unit. So if someone were to try to put a four-unit house on a 4,000-square-foot lot with six parking spaces, it becomes a little bit of a math problem. We're the working group is currently working with Bill Renault to come up with some example plans to see what those geographic challenges would be, and we're going to be trying to refine some of those details. With regards to, you know, if you had if you were able to fit a unit or a building that had the four units and you could fit, you respect that 30% minimum open space, then those development contacts that I showed would be compliant. But my understanding, based on some preliminary conversations, is that they would not be.
Yeah, I'm thinking 4,120, you know, 30%, green space, if you will, or open space, and then you have to have parking, and then you've got a tall, skinny building going straight up. I think what I wanted to point out is just for the public that perhaps the pictures we're looking at may not be exactly what we're going to see being built based on what we have in terms of the 40A. That's one thing. based on what we have in terms of the 40A. That's one thing. The other thing I wanted to mention is, when, when you say that, and we had the discussion about Greenwood and I understand what you were saying, but if you're saying six units is too much, well, if they're a larger lot size than Greenwood, wouldn't there be larger lots to put the six units on?
So, that's 100% a valid comment. I think that what we felt is that if you, by the time you get to six units, that we currently have zoning that allows for six units, but it requires a special permit, which allows the town that extra level of review, which we felt, based on the feedback that we've gotten through from the public and various members of the community, that that feedback and that oversight of proposed development projects is desired for something that starts to reach that six-unit-plus threshold. At the same time, if, if we hear differently from members of this town council as well as the public that we, that we were going down the wrong path, I think that members of the working group would be very interested in potentially looking at that. We felt as if it might be a good, I'll call it day-two exercise, to potentially have something in Greenwood where you could have four units as of right around Greenwood and ignore all of the complicated math with the state.
I, I understand that concept, but, you know, to the extent that we were saying that, you know, and, and I may be on the other side of the, how one feels about 40A than some other folks who think it's just the greatest thing. But either way, it seems to me that if you're in Greenwood and you, you want, you know, you're that much closer to Oak Grove and you're that much closer to the Melrose Bike Way and, you know, we also want to support Greenwood businesses, not just our downtown area, then it seems to me that, you know, a two, two-location solution wouldn't have necessarily been out of the question. I understand what, this is what you've come up with and I respect that. But, you know, I think my comments are valid. We have two train stations and almost a third one if you, if you count Northern Melrose. But those are just a couple of the points that I had. Let me see, what else? Yep, I, I think that pretty much covers what I'm concerned about.
And if you, if you may, one of the other things that we were really focused on, which if you look at the, the district that we currently propose, you, you notice that there's kind of a sliver along North Ave, Albion and Main. The reason is that, right now, what we try to do is we tried to basically take any commercially-oriented property or lot and make it so it's exempted from this. What we really didn't want is we didn't want to pass this overlay district in order to just comply with the state and then take our commercial corridors and have them all be four units or even one or two units as of right conversions to housing. Because we felt, you, you're not allowed to dictate mixed use. Some caveats that we don't need to get into because they get too complicated. But, that's the other reason why we didn't pursue the Greenwood option. Because we have, we felt a strong need to exempt any lots along Main because we didn't want to impact the business aspect of Greenwood. So, we started looking at the shoulder areas and that's where we thought, once you get off of Main Street, that that's where that, that density became, we became uncomfortable with it.
But, but can't you, doesn't 40A allow mixed use?
It allows it, but you can't make it a requirement. So, it makes you, it makes use could theoretically apply, but you can't force a developer to make a property mixed use.
My only other question is, in the back of the slides, you do have a minimum.
Correct.
And why aren't we choosing the minimum around Wakefield Station?
So, the reason why the working group felt is if we wanted to, so, for those who don't see on the screen right now, so if you take the, I'll call it the three sections of the, the district that we're currently proposing and you add a small section on the western side around.
You don't have it on this presentation?
Oh, yeah, it's on this presentation. Um, let me see. There we go. So, this is, this is what Counselor McLean is talking about. So, this would, this is, I'll call it the bare minimum option. So, we, I, and I defer to Aaron. Do you recall what we, with this option?
So, it's a seven, 1,753 units with 16.6 dwelling units per acre.
And so, the reason why the working group felt as if that, we felt as if, if we're going through this effort to pass an overlay district based on four units, which we did not perceive to be material, changed the neighborhood character of these, of these neighborhoods, that we felt as if it would be prudent to take that opportunity if we thought that, you know, for all its flaws with Section 40A, we thought that the, the net result of this district would actually be an increase of housing stock that isn't materially different from the existing neighborhood. And so, we thought pushing it farther to the east would be beneficial to the community because we'll also be increasing the housing on the eastern, you know, I'll call it buffer zone around our existing business district as well as along that MBTA bus route.
So, the basic difference between this and the other is that some of the precinct five or lower west side streets are not in there. Is that, it's hard for me with this map because I can't really see it.
Yeah, so the minimum is the three. And then, yes, then the five includes the top northeast corner and then the southeast corner. There's a little pockets there that that, in the five district. So, this is the three and then if the five includes the northeast and the southeast.
But the minimum would still be as a matter of right. So, you're just saying you don't think it would produce as much housing?
That's correct.
It wouldn't.
Okay, and that's a concern.
We just, what he was just saying, you know, to serve the other side of that town, the neighborhoods are similar and then also to serve the bus route as well as, you know, feed into our economic development with our business district as well. And you'll see many multifamilies already in that, that area as well.
Yeah, I guess my only thought is I, I guess I'm inclined to do the minimum regardless of whether it, whether.
The numbers work, and I guess if that's your question, the numbers work if you wanted to do the three districts. We were looking at this, how do we make the best of this situation and drive economic development in our downtown, serve a population that would use the bus route as well as kind of look in an area that has similar neighborhood fields as some of these here that already have some multifamily, that the whole three, two, three.
This, this does, does do that. It just may do it a little bit less than your other proposal.
Correct.
It's downtown and it's on the other side of the tracks. Okay.
Yeah, the material difference is just east, east of Main. You know, and how far, how far do you extend the district?
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Damarsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if I'm understanding, understanding this correctly, under the development context slide, you are proposing in this, I'll call this, this five-part district, 714 unit, 714 additional units, correct?
So, it would be 714 additional units that would be allowed.
As a matter of right.
Correct.
Right. But, the required housing under 40A is only 1696.
That's correct.
And we're, and the current housing is 1641, right?
For the five, for the five, or for the, for the larger district.
Yeah. That's what we currently have in town is, according to resident, residency. It calculates the number of the units that are already within these districts. I drew them out and it gave me 1641.
So, is that, so if my math is correct and you're basically saying that we would need to get 55 more units to get to our?
No.
Well, no, they still, we still, you need to have the capacity to build up to 1696. That 1641 does not count towards that.
So, for clarity, if you were to, I think where you're going is why, if we go with the minimum, what would that entail? The minimum district, the existing units would obviously be less than the 1641. So, really, what this is telling you right now is that if you took the existing district where we have the 1641 and you took every single house in that, in that and you started, started over again, for whatever reason, then you would be as of right be able to go up to the 2,355 as opposed to the existing 1641.
But, 2,355 is not, that, that's not, not the minimum though, ultimately.
The minimum is 1696.
So, I guess like to the earlier question by Counselor McLean, then why are we not just planning for 1696? I would think that if there's a 40A that, I think there's pretty widespread anger or frustration about the, this, this mandate that's been placed upon us as a, as a MBTA community. Why would we voluntarily offer up something that goes beyond what the minimum is required? That doesn't say that if a project above 1696 isn't worthy of, you know, perhaps a variance, it could, of course, be granted. But why would we, as a matter of right, create this opportunity for developers to just kind of come in, cash in and do what they want to do on more parcels of land than is required by state law?
I think that we, we as the working group made, made, when we looked at this, we felt as if that, yes, we don't like the mechanism that the state used to force this rezoning on communities. There are a lot of problems with the law as it relates to, as I mentioned, all the gyrations we had to do with these Excel spreadsheets and the math. However, if we just take a step back, we thought that four units for this area as of right was actually a good thing. And I understand that there may be a disagreement in terms of that statement with members of the county council. But we felt as if four units as of right would help facilitate a gentle rise in density around these active transit corridors where our downtown businesses are. And so, we thought that having that as of right in order to remove the obstacle to allow, you know, what we thought perceived as a, not a major impact to the neighborhood character because there are existing multifamilies and there's, I pulled up the, you know, we see all the pins around where we pulled up the photos, but there's multiple other ones we could have, could have done so as well. So, we thought that, yes, there's a way that, a compliance pathway where we could do the absolute bare minimum. We thought that going above and beyond the bare minimum from a policy perspective for the town would actually be beneficial for all those other reasons I've laid out.
I think it also goes back to the beginning too when how much of our, 75% of our area in town is zoned single residence. So, I think we're just looking at new ways of creating this new housing and making, taking the red tape off some of these developments. Again, you may disagree, but I think that was the consensus of the group.
Well, not, no, I disagree, but I think anyone that, that's, that is familiar with these areas would disagree because we're talking about, I, I mean, this area especially on the side, on the tunnel side of the tracks, like from Chestnut and all those, you know, going towards Prospect, that, that is a very dense area already. And I know that, like, people keep pointing to this 49A Chestnut Street. That, that structure does not fit with the character of, of that neighborhood whatsoever. It is a large, tall, imposing, imposing structure and it's also not affordable for most folks. So, I don't, I still don't think that's a good example of that. I completely agree with, with Counselor McLean that we should be doing the bare minimum to, to be in compliance with the law and then anything we decide to do beyond that is, is our prerogative. You, you point out that the business districts are not included in this. You know, Foundry, for instance, is also the industrial district, isn't, isn't, not included in here. But if you're looking to ultimately increase housing stock, it's going to be through further development on Foundry, which candidly feels more appropriate because we already have large buildings there. We, we will have probably more elimination of industrial with the replacement of these larger buildings. So, in terms of units, that's how you're going to get it. When you're talking about mixed use, because you can't do it as a matter of, as a requirement in these projects, it can be encouraged but not mandated. If you, if you go down Main Street, especially like Middle Main there from, say, like, the Rockery down to, say, Water Street, there is a lot of development potential with a lot of those, they say, one or two-story buildings there. If you, if you ended up with some of the structures that are more aligned with what you see on North Ave, like where Above Tonoe, for instance. That kind of a building would fit appropriately on any number of locations on Main Street and better achieve what you're talking about. Similarly, along North Ave, you could think about how many one-story retail businesses we have there. If some of those were converted to retail on the first and then three above, that's, that's an option. That's where you're going to capture those units. But this idea that we would go beyond what's required of us by law and then, you know, create a denser, denser, denser neighborhood than what already exists, which is already a very dense neighborhood, I think is a very bad idea. And I'm, I'm confident that the residents that are, that would be in these five zones, when you talk to them about this, they're probably going to say that because that's what I'm hearing already. It's, you have a lot of congestion already. This 30% too of, of open space, as you point out, 75% I believe of, of these lots are currently single-family, right? So, that presume.
Not within this, in town.
Within town, I'm saying though. So, and, and we have a 30% requirement. And the 30%, so that seems like a pretty good ratio. A single family presumably has one family living in it and 30% of their lot will be green space. Now, we're, we're saying on that same amount of, of land, the green space, we could have four families living there. And it just seems completely, you know, illogical that you're going to have the same, the same minimum required green space, but quadruple the number of families or individuals that could be living on the same parcel of land. You know, you're, you're going to be, it, it doesn't make any sense. So, I strongly oppose the idea that we go anywhere above the minimum. I think we do the, the state minimum and then we maintain our control. Every meeting for the past probably two months, or nearly, we've talked about trying to maintain some autonomy and some control with our neighborhoods, with these Nahontree projects and everything else. Why, why we would cede control and as a matter of right just hand things over to developers when we're, we're talking so much about 40B and our, our desire to try to take control of, of our development opportunities, it seems so counterintuitive. So, I, I respect what the working group has done and I know it's, it's not easy certainly. I don't agree with the law and that's, you're looking implemented. So, I'm not faulting you in any way. But I think the idea of going anywhere beyond what is mandated and required is a very bad idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just two factual things I just want to clarify. So, the reference to the 40B developments that have been in front of us. If I'm looking at what's proposed here, none of those would be permitted by right under what we're proposing under Chapter 40A.
That is correct.
That's correct, yeah.
And, and then also just, just to clarify, and again, I'm trying to like follow the little dotted lines on the map. The, the zones that you're proposing look like they all sit within general residence versus single residence. Is that?
There may be a handful of lots on the far western edge.
Okay, again, I'm sorry. It's hard to, hard to read on the little map on the screen.
Generally, general residence and business.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Other questions or comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Could you go to Slide 23 for me?
Uh, can you, which one is that?
It's the one that had the red mark about Greenwood and the density in Greenwood.
Yes.
Kind of explain that as we talked about before the meeting started today.
So.
The 11.8 is really the significant number, not the 69.
That's correct. So, what this is showing, this is the, the district that we looked at for Greenwood. When we ran the numbers, the, the number that's highlighted in red, the 11.8, and unfortunately, the arrow got shifted up in the post-processing process. But that's, that was, that district, based on four units as of right, yields an 11.8 units per acre, which is lower than that 15 threshold and therefore would not be compliant with the state law.
And that's why you would have to go up to six?
Correct. And that's based on the fact that the, you have, per the law, you have to take the existing lots as currently drawn in, in your registered deeds and you have to evaluate them on as, as presented basis. The lots in Greenwood are significantly larger on, on the whole than the lots in Wakefield Junction.
And then as, as we talked before the meeting, the, the law allows you to divide it up. You could have some of Wakefield Station, you could have some in Greenwood. But you gave me a good reason as to why that wasn't desirable.
Yeah, so basically, even with the districts that we're proposing, we had to create a, a small bridge because at least, I think it's 50%, 50% of your district has to be continuous. So, if you start chopping it up with sections in Wakefield Junction and then sections in Greenwood, we felt that that got more complicated and it became a, for lack of a better term, a more difficult story to tell in terms of why we were doing what we were doing. Because you start having all these caveats.
It increases the acreage, so then one of your district has to be 50% within, 75% of all the districts have to be within the transit area. But 50% of one district has to represent, am I saying that right? Yeah, 50% of it has to be one district.
You start having the horse street density.
Yeah, and I appreciate the analysis. I thought it was good to discuss it publicly. And then, the vote at town meeting in the spring would be a zoning bylaw change. So, I know you also serve on the bylaws review committee. So, would this be something that the bylaws review committee would look at, the proposed zoning bylaw, especially because we have the state's leading expert, zoning expert providing advice to the BR, to the bylaws review committee?
So, one, one point of reference, so I am not on the bylaw review committee. I just happen to attend a bunch of their meetings.
Oh, I thought you were.
However, as it really, yes, I know. But yeah, so.
You're really trying to avoid bedtime.
I know, exactly. But, the, we've had conversations with Chairperson Lieber already and we've talked to him about trying to get a draft of the bylaw, which we're in the process of drafting up at this time, and get it into them before we present it to town meeting. So, the intent would be that the bylaw review committee has their ability to review, vet and provide feedback on the proposed bylaw. Right now, just as an aside, we're, we finalized the map in the last month or so. We're now picking up the actual writing of the bylaw itself. picking up the actual writing of the bylaw itself. We've had some preliminary conversations with the working group, and now we're working with town staff to get some more, I'll call it, technical level feedback.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back, and I was thinking about this more, Council DeBrowski, about the whole Foundry Street area and the Main Street. I think too, and I just wanted to call this out because I want the public to know this too, if we concentrated on smaller areas of, of town, say Foundry Street, for example, we would have to go up in height. So Foundry Street to meet our, our number of units that we'd have to meet. So I think I just, is why you're seeing a number of those areas is for us to meet one, our, our dwelling unit, and then also our units per acre. So if we did concentrate on smaller areas, you would see larger buildings. So I just wanted to make note of that as well.
But how much larger would that be in comparison to what's, what's existed?
Well, yeah, I mean, to Grayson Lofts.
I mean, not even, not even saying Grayson Lofts, but even next door to Grayson Lofts, which is-
No, it probably would be similar or higher.
So in the issue is Grayson Lofts and those buildings are going in under special permits right now.
And we have more control.
This would then be, you'd have to permit them by right, is that the-
It would be by right, correct.
Thank you. Council Dennehy, I want to make sure you have a chance to-
Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine.
The thought popped in my head, I wanted that to be clear to the public as well.
I totally understand that. So, um, thank you, that was a great presentation. It was, I, I still have a lot of questions, but it was very good. It was a really good presentation. I guess I, I don't, I need to understand, wrap my hat around why we're doing more than what we're required to do. I still don't understand it, but I might come back to, to understand that. It just, it, to me, it doesn't make any sense. And I had a question, when you said that the, what we saw on the presentation on Stark Avenue, that that wouldn't be permitted by right? And that, is that just because it's outside of the transportation?
So, if I may, so what Stark Ave is a 12-unit development.
Yeah.
So this proposal, this multifamily district, if it's greater than four units, it's not applicable. So you need a special permit, you need some sort of alternative zoning compliance pathway. So this would only apply if you have four units or less, you're only within the district, and you meet all the other dimensional requirements that we're, again, trying to suss out and, and work through, as well as the parking requirements.
Couldn't they do like two separate four units?
As long as they met the minimum amount of the square footage for the lot.
But if I may, they would then have to subdivide their, that, that's a different whole thing.
They'd have to subdivide, but that, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure that that would probably, that that wouldn't be a, I think that they, there might be opportunities for them to do that.
And then as it relates to Stark Ave in particular, that also falls outside of this proposed district, so therefore-
Right, no, no, I understand. I think that's what I was saying is that it's more that it's outside of the, the transportation. That's why it, that's why it does, but I just don't want us to get into a situation that other neighborhoods are going to have to, that are close to the, to transportation, are going to have to be, you know, dealing with those issues. I'd rather have us have more control over it and do what's our minimum, and then we have more control. I do like the, the idea of Foundry Street too, is that, you know, the, the idea is that I know like when Melrose, way, way back, when the houses were developed, the idea was that you had small lots, you had small lots, but they built a lot of parks. So that, you know, your children were playing in their yards, but you could take them locally to a park, so there's tons and tons of parks. I feel like we're not going to be accomplishing that. There's not going to be parks that, you know, as you increase places for children to go. And how can, is there any way that we can incorporate? And I'm not sure that we can because of the density requirements. But I think that's a really important thing, and I-
What are you, so we should add parks to it?
Yeah, we're not going to be, well, we're not going to be able to, but it's, I, I'm just concerned about open space for children having place to, place to, to play, to run, and especially if we're trying to get people not to be car-dependent.
Do you, is there something particularly you'd want to see us to try to address?
I don't know, I just think, I, I don't know, but I just think that that's like a, that's the thing that, that concerns me a little bit, is that think about maybe, you know, around easy walking distance to places that, that families could go, you know, within a, a quick walk, within a 10-minute walk.
And honestly, I think that's one of the reasons why we picked the locations that we picked, is obviously we, there's some constraints from the state in terms of how far away from the commuter rail you can go, but we tried to focus on downtown, business, main corridors, main, albeit north, because we thought that that was most likely where if you had additional families move in, there are things to do.
Yeah.
Businesses to populate, and the intent would be that, again, I'll call it that gentle density that rises up allows, you know, for people to come in and frequent those businesses and drive economic development, and for them to, you know, be able to leverage that, you know, a lot of these districts are in pretty close proximity to the lake as well, in terms of being able to walk to it, to enjoy that resource.
Like how far a walk is it, where-
Well, then you have the Molten on one side of the district, at the Molten Park on the west side, then you have the Spalding Playground at the head of the, the one district, you have the Galva into the south, a little further down, trying to make those better connections again to, you know, the J.J. Round Park as well.
We'll have to fix up J.J. Round.
Huh?
We'll have to fix up J.J. Round. But I mean, I do think that we should as a community invest in maximizing the recreational opportunities that we have, that that has to be part of the plan, is that we have-
So maybe if I could put a pin in that, just because I think that's more of a master plan discussion. So what we're talking about here doesn't affect any public spaces that we already own. It's just, we're talking about building on privately owned parcels.
No, I understand, but I think that it's, I understand. I also, I also think that in terms of the 1.5 parking spaces that's going to be there, is that we need to have very strict regulation about not parking on the street if we can in those areas too, because otherwise people are going to be encroaching. I'm just afraid that we, we're trying to get people less car-dependent, and yeah, they may not be parking in their driveways, but they might be parking all over, and I think that that negates the spirit of this.
So I do, I do think that parking is one of the things that we wanted to, to bring up and potentially highlight to this council. We've heard from, I'll call some internal staff at the town level as we've started to populate this, so I'm concerned that that 1.5 number may be too high. Based on the, the more parking spaces you have, the more cars you eventually will end up, the more traffic you eventually will have. There's also separate and apart a number of concerns that relates to how potential new developments would impact or potentially interplay with parking on street.
Mm-hmm. Whole different conversation.
That's a whole different conversation, but that's something that we have heard, and we're trying to figure out what, you know, if that one and a half is the right number.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why we, we're, we're going to be intending to go to the Traffic Advisory Committee in order to get some of their feedback and then try to refine the proposal based on their feedback. And obviously, if anyone here has any feedback, as it relates to that, that's one of the things that we're looking for active guidance on.
So I don't think the spirit is for people to be parking on the street.
And I think to play devil's advocate too, you could go to many of these single residence neighborhoods too and see three or four cars in front of their house.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah, so I think it's just an overall conversation.
100%. But, but most people, a lot of people can fit four cars in their driveway that have it, they're not caught.
But that's why I think we need to think about what that parking ratio is, because we want, we don't want that to be an issue.
Right, yeah.
For everyone in town.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's just, okay, so I guess that's, that's my points for now, but thank you for the updates. I really appreciate you coming back and, and giving us updates, and thank you for all your work. I know it's, it's a lot, so thank you.
Just as I haven't spoken yet, Council McLean?
Just a couple more points. We did talk about parking at your meeting, and you know, my, my whole point of that is it's not really a separate thing because this is all whack in the mole, and the knee bone is connected to the thigh bone, and you can rate, lower it to 1.25, but if we let cars fill out onto all the streets as we do, then you, you get five parking spaces instead of six, but it isn't going to change a darn thing if people can just put their car in the street. Second thing is, we don't anticipate one SHI or moderate income housing unit out of our proposal, do we?
No.
No.
Right. And I think that's the point to be made when the chair was talking about 40B, these aren't 40B projects, but these are going to work against 40B numbers, which is another reason why I tend towards the minimum. I don't want to lose the state grants, I don't want to lose the state aid, but my feeling is, and I think Foundry, I don't want to speak for Council DeBrowski, but I think what Foundry's mentioned, it's mentioned in the terms of, that's where we're getting our real units, that's where we're getting our real growth, and that's where we have our real density. I, I respectfully disagree with four, four, four units being gentle density. I just, I just don't, you know, I, I don't agree with that terminology. I think we're going to have more overcrowding, it's going to work against 40B, we should do the absolute minimum because we just want to comply with the state. I think we need to continue to look at not only what the Commonwealth can do for us, but what the Commonwealth is doing to us. And here, I think they're also doing something to us, and I really think we should stick with the minimum. That's my own personal opinion. Thank you.
One thing, Council McLean, that you just mentioned, that probably we would warrant a further collaboration, just for, for context for both the public and the balance of the town council. So you're 100% right, what we're proposing right now does not have an affordability component. I think that's probably one of the, the most challenging parts of this law. However, the way that the law is written, just so everyone understands the rationale, you can only have 10% as a, as a maximum requirement on a development proposal, and based on that, you have to have, you know, probably a 10-unit as of right before you can start adding an affordability component. We felt, and I'm sure that members of the town council agree, 10 units as of right was not appropriate for this community, so based on the way the law was written, we elected to proceed without an affordability component on that basis. We, we, there's a lot of support for affordable housing on the working group and all the other folks that we've heard from the public, but unfortunately, the way the law is written, it's, our hands are tied unless we go to a density that we think is grossly inappropriate for, as of right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment that I just want to make, you know, as we think about this question of sort of a minimum district versus something that's, that's larger, you know, it strikes me as I look at our zoning map overall, we have a lot of really random lines between zoning districts, and I think we see it at town meeting, right? Like, how many times over the last number of years have we had proposals to come to rezone a lot because it sits like right in the middle of the business district and single residence? And so as we think about this question, I think as a community, I think we should strive to make sure that we're drawing lines that make logical and intuitive sense. And what I see in the proposal here, I think, is an attempt to do that, so you don't have sort of one set of, of zones on one side of Main Street and one set of zones on the other side of Main Street. That does definitely put us at a place where we're looking at a different number than the minimum, and maybe there are other changes we can make on the margins, but I would caution us against just sort of lobbing off those two sections on the right-hand side of the map, because I, I do think that creates a, a set of zones that quite frankly just don't make a lot of sense. And, and again, I want to make sure that logic kind of prevails in terms of how we, we promote development as well. So, you know, I, I'm sure you're going to hear more community feedback, I know you have more community hearings, and would encourage members of the public who have perspectives on this, if they live in these areas or not, to participate in those. But I, I hope one of the principles that we do hew to as we come up with a proposal that goes in front of town meeting is, again, coming up with something that's sort of rational, because the, the problem with just kind of doing the, the quote-unquote bare minimum is sometimes that puts you in a position where you're not doing what makes sense for, for the community, and I, I think there's a balance here that we, we want to strike. Any other final questions or comments? So obviously, this is a little bit of a complex issue, we'll have you back again as this progresses, but any other final questions or comments to share? Council Smith-Galvin?
I just kind of don't want to lose sight, and everybody's going to have their opinions, and the, the purpose for doing this, and whether the state's doing it right or wrong, is that this region needs more housing, and it needs more housing so that my kids have a place to move, so that, you know, we can age in place, and I don't want to lose sight of that. There's really good questions about control and size and all of that, but, you know, let's remember that the state is doing this because they want people to be moving in, in transport kind of centric areas, and we live in greater Boston, and I think we need to be part of the solution. And I think, you know, to, to Chair Chines' point, that's what we've tried to do, you know, we spent a lot of time today looking at Envision again, we've spent years on Envision, and this really kind of puts some, you know, puts some emphasis on that area where the rail trail is and the Envision is, and I think that this holds together well from our master plan and, and from just trying to get, you know, the people that we want living in town to be able to live in town.
Thank you. So thank you, we've, again, we've kept you very long, appreciate your time tonight. And also, I know this is, you know, one step in a very long process, so appreciate all your work, all the work of everyone on the committee, and I know we'll be hearing from you again.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So stretch code at 10 o'clock at night.
Well, no, not yet. Item 6G, we have a flag policy discussion. So Council McLean, I know you, this was your request for the agenda.
It was my request, Mr. Chairman, and the, you know, what, what my hope was, was that we would be able to work on some kind of a compromise and perhaps get ahead on this. I've certainly, as we all have, have had comments from many citizens, had a comment today that, you know, it is our job to, to make these decisions, and I shouldn't, you know, have that final paragraph that I had in this proposal to limit the flags that we are going to entertain. Although we haven't ever entertained every flag, we didn't entertain the straight pride flag, and we've, we've had two Christian flags in front of us in, in a matter of just weeks. I was hoping that I could arrive at some kind of reasonable compromise on this, and was willing to make, as part of that, that the veterans would have, the US flag would only be, would be the only flag on, on Flag Day. Subsequent to that, I have spoken with some counselors who have indicated that they think there should be more vetting of this, whether, you know, be that before various committees and, and individuals, you know, veterans, HRC, and so forth. Because I have received those requests, I am actually going to move to postpone this to our November 27th, 2023 meeting.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
That was a very quick second. I think that, I don't know if that reflects the substance or the hour, but either way.
The hour.
Any discussion on the motion to postpone to November 22nd? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, coming, coming soon to a meeting near you, thank you. All right, now we move to item number seven, the town council meeting warrant. So we have a, a couple of specific warrant articles that we just wanted to give the council a quick overview of before we approve the warrant in general. The first is related to a specialized energy code. And Sherry, I don't know if we have Melissa on yet, still?
Yes, yeah, we do. Hi, Melissa, can you hear?
Melissa, thank you very much for waiting, our apologies for, for the, the late hour, but if you wouldn't mind going ahead and speaking about the specialized energy code article.
Yes, let me share my screen here.
Sure, I think Sherry, you or CAT might need to share.
Yeah, WCAT, can you? Thank you so much, you should be good now, Melissa.
Sherry Tombacher may be on as well.
Okay, can you guys see my screen?
We can.
Okay, great. So, hey, everybody, I'm Melissa Yousen, I'm the chair of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I'm here to give a brief presentation about the warrant that we will, we are sponsoring for a town meeting. So the ESC approves the, the warrant on September 14th, and we propose replacing the current stretch energy code with a specialized energy code with the effective date of July 1st, 2024. And just a little background on energy codes, there are three building energy codes that municipal, municipalities have available in Massachusetts. There's the base code, which around 40 municipalities are under. There's the stretch energy code, which we automatically adopted in January 2023 when we became a green community. So we're underneath that, along with 300 other green communities, and we're proposing that the town adopt the stretch energy, the specialized energy code in this warrant article. There's some minor differences between the stretch energy code and the, and the specialized There's some minor differences between the stretch energy code and the specialized code. The stretch energy code requires energy concentration measures to reduce heating and cooling demand, creates a strong standard to ensure buildings are more resilient to power outages while enabling efficiency, electrification, affordability for residential and commercial construction additions. And this applies to new construction additions and renovations. The specialized energy code is an additional set of requirements that relates to new residential and commercial construction only. It requires that buildings are either built all electric or choosing to use fossil fuels. They need to either pre-wire for electrification or install a minimum amount of solar. Any new large multifamily housing construction over 12,000 square feet will need to meet highly energy-efficient standards, which is already being done more and more in affordable housing in Massachusetts. It results in minimal additional construction costs and significantly lowers operational costs. So existing buildings, additions, and renovations will still need to comply with the stretch code. The specialized energy code goes above the stretch code improvements to ensure consumer protection and efficiency through pre-wiring for going all-electric in the future. This helps to avoid costly retrofits, saving consumers money and unnecessary work to comply with future building code requirements. And as of October 1st, there is 20 towns and cities in Massachusetts that have adopted the specialized code, which covers 20% of the state population. And another 20 additional communities are expected to pass the specialized code soon, bringing the total to about 20% of the state population. And actually, tonight, there are several town meetings in Orleans, Chelmsford, and Carlisle who are voting to adopt the code. So as I previously presented to you in April, I want just a brief recap of and highlight our greenhouse gas inventory that shows that buildings are the town's largest contributor to our greenhouse gas emissions. So the breakdown of our emissions is stationary energy and transportation caused nearly all of Wakefield's emissions. And residential plus commercial industrial buildings are the largest emissions category at about 55%. And emissions from burning fuel oil and natural gas in homes and businesses make up 70% of the town's total energy emissions from buildings. So why should Wakefield adopt the specialized code? Well, first off, it aligns Wakefield with the Massachusetts State Climate Goals of net zero emissions by 2050. And without adopting the specialized code, Wakefield would not meet these goals, even if WMGLT supplies 100% carbon-free electricity. And as previously mentioned, our greenhouse gas inventory shows buildings represent the biggest opportunity for greenhouse gas production in town. Second, it provides benefit to homeowners. It's less expensive to proactively electrify a home than to retrofit it later. And this code benefits homeowners by doing that upfront. Residents will also save on their utility costs due to higher energy efficiency for heating and cooling homes. There's also school building incentive that MSBA just recently announced that they're providing an additional 3% incentive for new school projects that meet the specialized code requirements. And this would mean huge savings for the new high school. Also, if we don't adopt this code, when it becomes required for our Green Communities program, we'll lose our newly achieved distinction and access to the grant opportunities of being a green community. And lastly, the specialized code is in line with Wakefield's MVP resilience framework and master plan, which emphasize moving toward more sustainable choices for the future of our town. And if we adopt this code, we'll be a state leader and a model for other towns to follow. So separate from the warrant, but related in terms of climate and future planning for Wakefield, we wanted to take this opportunity to propose that the council put on a future agenda, a formal vote to prepare a climate action plan. A climate action plan is a detailed and strategic framework for measuring, planning, reducing, and adapting to climatic contributors and impacts. The time is now to develop a comprehensive plan for the following reasons. Climate change impacts are being felt on a daily basis with extreme flooding, weather events, and property loss. All communities need to take accelerated action to increase climate resilience and align with Massachusetts State Climate Goals. We have the opportunity to build off the work that we've done for the Municipal Long Ability Prepartness Plan and the greenhouse gas inventory to make actual progress in reducing Wakefield's climate impacts. And the climate action plan will provide a roadmap detailing future focus areas and action items, as well as foster community engagement and process. So we're asking the town council to support the development and adoption of climate action plan with support from town staff, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and stakeholder input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. I appreciate the presentation and the context, especially at the hour. Any comments or questions from the council, either on the stretch energy, sorry, the specialized energy code? Thank you. We've been calling it the stretchier energy code when we put this on the agenda, which I know is not the actual terms. Any questions or comments on the specialized energy code or the climate action plan? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I spent a lot of time researching this because I didn't know much about it. I went to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources that had the specialized energy code adoption process. And in there, they had a proposed draft bylaw, and I noticed that there was a big difference, a significant difference between the warrant article, Article Number 7, and the draft bylaw that the D E R put out. And that dealt with existing buildings. And then I went and looked at R C 101 compliance, and R C is part of the new specialized energy code. And it specifically said in there that it does address existing residential buildings as well as new construction. So when I saw these two documents, I called the town attorney today, Mr. Mullin, and asked him if he could look into this, because I thought that the words "and existing buildings" should be in the warrant. And Mr. Mayo, you have the response from Mr. Mullin? Because we've now changed the warrant. I wanted to make sure you knew we've actually changed the warrant article now.
I think you have to sing.
Yes, I'm aware.
So I just want to make sure you were fine with us making that change.
Why are we making that?
It's happening to me.
Yeah, I was.
And I shared it with them, too.
Yeah, thank you for making that, getting that to our attention. It was an oversight, and sorry for omitting it.
I mean, the only thing, Mr. Mayo, is that Mr. Mullin agrees that we need to make that change, correct?
Yeah, Tom sent over an email after he talked with Councilor Vincent to myself, to Councilor Vincent, to Sherri Dalton, and to Chair Chines. Steve, please make the indicated change in Article 7, which he had sent over the new version, which went out in Govinda. This is Tom Mullin. I thought I had faithfully recreated the sample article promoted by the state, the specialized energy code, but somehow the version I submitted said the purpose was for new construction, when it should have said for both new and existing buildings. I'm grateful to Bob Vincent for picking up the discrepancy, which is really quite important. Please explain the change to the council before they vote and extend my apologies. Thank, well, I think Mr. Vincent already extended the explanation, so that's what the change is.
And I bring that up because I'm no subject matter expert on this stuff at all, and I could very well have been wrong on this. I just happened to read this supporting documentation to help educate myself on this. But when I saw that error, I thought I should bring that to Mr. Mullin's attention to see whether we needed to fix something as important as a warrant article.
And the new warrant is in the package, the good-end of the package, but if anybody wants a copy, I do have copies. If anybody didn't.
So just to call attention, so the change is under Section 180-2 Purpose, the addition of the words "and existing buildings" to the end of that sentence?
To a relevant section of the building code for both, both new construction and existing buildings.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Councilor Smith-Galvin.
I just want to clarify what that means. So when, with the first slide here that has the buckets, the specialized net zero code is only for new construction, but what happens is legally it replaces the language we have in there for the stretch code. So the stretch code for existing buildings and renovations are still under the stretch code that we have already passed. So we're not saying that this specialized net zero code is for existing buildings. We're simply saying that it replaces the entire stretch code, and that now refers to the old stretch code for existing buildings. I know that's confusing, but.
So effectively, I think, just for clarity, you know, what we are doing is correcting basically kind of a drafting error in terms of replicating the state bylaw, the state law that is part of the proposed bylaw here.
And the language we now have mirrors what's in the state's proposed bylaw.
Thank you for the, first of all, thank you for the attention to detail. My goodness, clearly you pick up on things that many of us would have missed, so appreciate that. Other questions for Melissa before we mercifully let her go? Councilor Dubrasky?
I would just add more of a comment. This feels like it's recently been a meeting of mandates, where we're talking about all of these mandates that are being created. I respect what you're saying relative to the benefits that may be derived, but I think that that should be driven by the market. And if there's, if in fact, the electrification at the time of construction is more cost-effective than retrofitting, which I don't doubt it is, or if there are the savings to be realized for the homeowners or renters or whomever, then I would have to think that the market forces would drive that. And so I don't, I don't, again, we're not voting on this. This is an article before town meeting, but I don't see the necessity to have to try to create more of a stricter code and a new mandate when it's well within any developer's ability to meet these standards, you know, without being mandated to do so. And if the benefits are as they've been described, then it would seem to make good fiscal sense to do it. So I'm not in favor of the idea of creating more mandates relative to this. I think that what we have in place is in compliance with the law, and I think if people want to go above and beyond that, that's the prerogative. And if they choose not to, then there may be financial impacts, you know, from how you've described the analysis. But I think we should stay with the majority of the communities now. 351 cities and towns, 300 are, it's not like where we're at currently.
Well, we were very late, sorry, we were very late to the game with the stretch code.
Understood.
So you're right, we're a little more out in front on this, but it's an opportunity to be a leader, and we can definitely, we're going to discuss all of those things.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll let you two bring these to town meeting this time.
Exactly. We'll bring it to town meeting. But I appreciate your thoughts on that. It's helpful.
I see we had, oh, we had Commissioner Betcher on. He seems to have disappeared. Oh, there he is.
He's there, yeah. Nope.
Somewhere he's there.
Where he went.
Tom, you had your hand up. Do you have any comments from the gas and light perspective you want to share?
I did. Tom Betcher, 25 Wakefield Ave. I am a gas and light commissioner and also a member of the working group for the specialized energy code. Just wanted to kind of make a comment around 27% of all building space en masse, starting in 2023, by 2050, will be new construction. So the Department of Energy has put that number out there, so all new space is 27%. In regards to developers doing the right thing in terms of cost and energy efficiency, they don't. They do what is the cheapest that they can get away with and to be the most profitable. From a gas and light perspective, electrification is really the only way that we, as a municipality, can make the 2050 goals by the state. There are penalties from the state if communities do not make these greenhouse gas emission standards. And this optimized code is the Department of Energy's pathway for us, municipalities, to make those goals that the state has already mandated. So this is our pathway as a town to make these goals.
Thank you. Other questions or comments again before we mercifully let Melissa and Tom go for the evening? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate the context. This is a complicated issue and one of many we've faced tonight, and appreciate learning more and look forward to the discussion at town meeting.
Is there any comments on the climate action plan proposal?
Oh, thank you.
What would be the next steps on that?
So the, it sounds like the request is to ask the council to basically allow the town to develop a draft for consideration. I don't know that we need a vote for that.
I mean, I will say the E S C has started to do this, and we frankly, we really need some staff support on it. So I don't know that that has to come from the town council. And I think there's a lot to be said for it coming from the top to do a climate action plan. So we don't, I know today is probably not the right time to talk about it. I brought it up a couple of weeks ago as well.
Yeah, I know we have that sort of tendency to easily slate it in for our next meeting. I don't know, Councilor Smith-Galvin, if you want to maybe come back just with a definitive proposal for us to consider, then we'll take it up on the 13th.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Before we vote on the warrant, Mr. Mayo, very quickly, we have another warrant article that I know we wanted to spend just a moment or two updating the council on.
And it wasn't my pithy town report that I give every year? That wasn't it?
That wasn't it. Article 6.
That's what I figured. So we've been talking a lot when we go to state meetings or among ourselves is what can we do to offer tax relief in a pointed way to people that maybe need it a little bit more than others do? And Victor and I talk about this a lot. And there are a number of exemptions under Master Law 59, Section 5C and a half, which allows the town to offer exemptions, to adopt this part of the state law, and offer exemptions to certain categories of people. And the items are, the amount that you get reimbursed from the state are set by the state. However, we can go over that. And I think that we can certainly cover talking to Victor, going over in a few of these areas, and actually doubling in a few of these areas exemptions to really some of our maybe needier citizens and cover it through the overlay. So it's not going to count us, it costs us any real extra money. So Article 6, which is an exciting article, whenever we're hopefully, you know, giving some money back, they're a little bit more exciting. Surviving spouse, $175 now. We had 12 applicants last year, double that to 350. Veterans, $400. We had 93 applicants, doubling that to 800. Veterans 22C, it's actually 1,500. We had zero applicants last year, doubling that to 3,000. The most we've ever had in Victor's history here has been three. Veterans 22E, $1,000, double that to 2,000, cost of 45,000, as we have 45 applicants here. Blind, blind exemption, doubling the $500 currently to 1,000. And elderly, although we do have the Wakefield Senior Discount that we offer, that may not be one that we want to double, but I will, it's in the spirit of the article, so we have to come back on them. But that's $1,000 a year. It's very, it's tough going through the state with certain exemptions because you could lose your circuit breaker exemption next year if you don't spend so much of your income on taxes and water and sewer bills. So we have to be a little bit ginger on that. We don't want people to lose a higher exemption at the state. So Victor's a great job doing that. But the elderly exemption is $1,000 a year, 65 people take advantage of it. If we did all of this and doubled all of this, we'd be around 100, you know, $140,000 in our overlay. Our overlay, as you know, is $600,000 a year. We don't really touch that. Victor does a great job. So it's a great way of our helping some of our citizens, and hopefully the state catches up with us, and we'll get reimbursement from the state on these. I was actually hoping when they came out with their latest budget that those would be in there. These weren't, but the circuit breaker was, so that's another great help to people. So I think this community has done a real lot within the law of what we can. And one of the comments that I made Friday afternoon, we had a little state session, Chair Chines was there, and Councilor Vincent was there, too, is I did tell our groups, and hopefully they'll take it back, that really, we would like to see other items like the circuit breaker that we're doing here. Allow us to do that and not make us have to go through that home rule petition every three years and wait for the legislature to rule on it. And if, maybe the state will allow us to adopt that section, which would be great, too. So I think this is a great thing that costs us nothing and maybe helps out a few people in an area of rise in taxes. So that is exciting Article 6. So that is exciting Article six. The other articles, use of free cash to balance the budget, I'll be bringing that to the council before town meeting. Hopefully we'll have three contracts to do as well. And we'll be going over those prior to town meeting as well. But they need to be on the warrant so I can even discuss them at this point. So with the changes that we just talked about, we would love to have a motion to approve the warrant so we can post it and do all those things.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the warrant article number 60?
Probably the entire warrant with the grant.
The entire warrant.
The entire warrant. Move to approve the entire warrant.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, since Mr. Mullen isn't here, maybe you all can give me some advice. So I directly benefit from the veteran's disability, which means I get the $400 a year as a disabled veteran and, and then I would get the, if that passed at town meeting, I would get the benefit of doubling that to 800 a month. That causes me some hesitation as to whether I should abstain from voting on this.
So for, for approval of the warrant, we're not actually approving these articles. We are just approving their presentation to town meeting. So you, you are not making any decisions that would directly affect you. It's really just an administrative action, a ministerial action to, to get the, the warrant in front of town meeting.
Can I, can I jump in?
Please.
I, I think that there certainly may be an exception in these areas, particularly on voting for the entire tax rate. For the community as a homeowner, you vote, well, you know, I voted on it, you vote on it. So, you know, maybe you're, you're benefiting from going at a lower tax rate. I think that Tom Mullen would probably say that you're fine. My advice would be though to abstain, just to be on the, abstain, just to be on the safe side. Because the town council is sponsoring the motion.
Okay, thank you. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
I would say on the side of caution, but it's probably not necessary, but, you know, that won't hurt you.
I suspect the warrant's going to pass with a majority. I don't know. It's gonna be tight. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving, approving, excuse me, the town meeting warrant as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Vincent? Motion carries 601. All right. Item number eight, licenses. We have a class two license renewal for diagnostic motor vehicle inspection located at 129 Broadway. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the class two license for diagnostic motor vehicle inspection at 129 Broadway Street.
I second that.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 70. Item number 10, Community Media Day Resolution. So this, just as context, is something that we approved last year in recognition of Community Media Day and the, the great partnership we have here at Wakefield Community Access Television, both for filming and archiving our meetings as well as so many other events in the community. I'd ask if there is a motion to approve the Community Media Day Resolution for 2023.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. And again, I do want to stress the, the council's appreciation to WCAT for everything that you do, not only for us as a, as a council, but for the community as a whole. We are very, very lucky to have this partnership and the, the late night here is one good example of the great work that you guys do. We have covered items 11 and 12. Item number 13, do we have any announcements?
Very quickly.
Please.
If I could, I'm sorry to keep you late, but there was a little bit of a mention today about grants that our, our staff has gotten. I just wanted to let the community know that, you know, our, our staff works very hard and filing for these, these grants is certainly no easy task and you kind of never know it goes into, and then you don't hear for months and you kind of wonder. But I would like to say, let you know that I have 707,807 dollars and 71 cents worth of grants to kind of tell the council about tonight. Number one is a, in the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program or recycling grants. Wakefield gets this every year due to the great work done by our DPW department, particularly Joe Conway and Ann Waite, and that's for 16,900 dollars, not a bad chunk of change. Bill Renault talked about this tonight, 571,913 dollars in the Housing Works Infrastructure Program. And this really was to have that connectivity from Tarrant Lane, talked a lot about housing tonight, down Popkin Street and over to Prospect. So, you know, people in that area can walk and have a walkable community and get down to the lake and downtown and things like that. Another really good one, great job by Bill Renault and Erin Kikinder on that. Housing Choice Grant Program. Town may remember we were a housing choice community, I think earlier this year, 79,000 in technical grants. And I would think we could probably use this to help put together a housing production plan. Perfect part of that would help us with handling some of those 40B items. And finally, this one just came in over the weekend and we, you know, it's, it's from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities Office, Grants and Research, and it's 39,995 dollars and 71 cents. I don't know why there's 71 cents on this one. And this goal is to support traditional traffic, traditional enforcement activities and develop new strategies to reduce roadway crashes, injuries, fatalities, and associated economic losses. I am wondering if some of this within the parameters of the grant could be used for the signage that you talked about today. Either way, we're going to get those up, but this would be nice to, to use that. So I was particularly very happy that we got close to 40,000 on this one and kudos to the police department. And as you guys know, I always look at our neighbors and what, what they got too. And we, we outdid all of them with the exception of Stonem, got 40,000. So they beat me by 29 cents. I'll have something to say to them about that. We did much better than our surrounding friends. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to go on so late.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Other announcements? Counselor Smith Galvin?
Just quickly, we just talked about WCAT. I wanted to congratulate Ian Kerr. I don't know that we did that in the last meeting.
We did, but we should congratulate him again.
Okay, sorry. Glad, okay, I learned about it when I got back. Sorry I wasn't at the last meeting. And the ESC, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, is hosting its first electric vehicle showcase this Sunday, the 22nd, at the joints, Betsfield parking lots from 10 to 1 PM. So there'll be lots of different kinds of electric vehicles and electric bikes as well.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
I just wanted to congratulate the chair for winning the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence 5K on Saturday. Well done.
I, I appreciate that. I, I have to say it may be due to a lack of very fast runners of the field, but thank you. And congratulations, of course, to Counselor McLean, who was not very far behind me finishing number three.
Thank you.
Other announcements? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Just two, the Senior Resource Fair is October 25th from 10 to 1:00 at the McCarthy Senior Center. You can get your flu shot. They'll have a lot of other town representatives there to give you a lot of information. And also, since we don't meet again until November 13th, Veterans Day Ceremony will be on November 11th at 11:00 at the Galvin Middle School. Thank you.
And I, I will mention, he won't mention it, but I will, but our keynote speaker for the Veterans Day commemoration is our own Counselor Vincent, speaking about his experiences in active duty. So really excited to hear, Bob, your, your talk, and I know a lot of people are as well. So thank you for doing that and being part of the ceremony.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Dubraski?
Thank you, Chairman Chines. I wanted to just take a moment, obviously to address the, the just absolute horrific acts of terror in Israel and, and the impact that it's, it's had. And I think it's easy when you, you see incidents like that to think about them as happening in faraway places, but it's important to draw the local connections that we have with them, and we, and we have a number of them. I was speaking with Rabbi Greg Hirsch about, you know, the impact that it's had on, on his congregation certainly. And I think there's a lot of processing that's still going on, understandably so, and it will be for some time. But there's also another component to that, and that's our military service. And specifically, we have a Wakefield High School grad, class of 2000, Shelby Nicodin, who is the, she is the commander of the USS Thomas Hudner. Now, that's significant because the USS Thomas Hudner was actually on its way back when the incidents in Israel occurred. And so the Thomas Hudner was, was called back to the Mediterranean and is now stationed there. So I was speaking with her, her mom earlier today about, you know, the experience. And at first she, she wasn't aware that her daughter, again, being commander, was, was there, but when she heard that the USS Ford, Gerald Ford and Dwight Eisenhower were also being called, she knew that they were all part of the same strike group, strike group that she was in. And so she's there now and she has a four-year-old at, at home. She's there now and her mom hopes that she'll be home by, by Christmas and hopes to visit here by Christmas. So I think it really just puts a fine point on the fact that when we hear about these world events, there, there are so many layers to them. But there's also a lot of local connection to it. So I certainly, we, we keep Shelby and everyone, you know, in our, in our military and our thoughts and prayers, you know, during, during this period. I understand that on indirect combat, certainly, but they are, they are positioned in places of, of high risk in, in the advancement of, of, you know, protecting others. So I thought it was important to share that local connection because I think it's a really significant one. And we thank her and we thank all of our, of our, our military for their service. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor, but it looks like you have some show and tell.
I, I do. Just to remind everyone, Sweet Sir is on Wednesday. Their second out of three is on Wednesday. And I just wanted to thank Steve and his team and show a little framed picture that's going to be in Steve's office or somewhere in town hall. But two, two years ago, somebody who goes to school with my sister asked if they could bring fellows from the International Fellows Program to Wakefield. And the fellows are, there were 93 of them from 80 different countries, senior international military officials and government officials from U.S. security partner nations from every global region. And they come and spend a year in Washington DC to learn about government. And, and they came late September and Steve's team set up the Civic Center and we had 93, probably 100 with everyone there. And we were joined by Mayor Paul Broder from Melrose and Steve and myself, and we talked about local government in Wakefield. And you might have seen the fellows in their bright red jackets walking around town because what they changed this year was that they, the two busloads from Boston stayed and had lunch at our regional places. And they, they enjoyed Public Kitchen and Brothers and two of the folks went to Rada's and bought lots of gifts for their families back home. And they just asked such great questions. I just want to highlight, and so just wanted to take a moment to thank DPW and Dan McGrath, who really set up the Civic Center, looked great. But they asked such great questions about town meeting and lots of questions this year on education and funding of education. But it really makes you appreciate all that we do in town and specifically all that Steve and his team do. So I just wanted to share that. They give us this framed picture of all the fellows. So we wish them all well and hopefully they will be back next year in Wakefield.
Some incredibly tough questions this year. Really, it was really, we had to be on our toes.
Yeah.
Well, well, thank you. It's really exciting to hear this and really heartwarming. Do you mind if I pass this around for folks to see? Any other announcements? Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. First of all, just to let the council and the public know, we did make our appointments for the year for the Finance Committee. As folks may know, under our charter, those appointments are made by a committee consisting of the Chair of the Council, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and the Town Moderator. The five appointments that we made this year were Doug Butler, Terrell Howell, Amy Forsythe, Don Ravenel, and Lori Wheeler, really, really talented group. And I will also say, we interviewed other candidates who were also exceptionally talented, who we didn't have enough spots for, but, you know, it was a little bit of an embarrassment of riches and hope everyone who applied will do so again or will find other committees to, to get involved in because it really was just an exceptional, exceptional group of individuals we, we considered. A second announcement, just a fun little milestone that we have officially closed out the Public Safety Building Project. I know the doors have been open, but it's not really closed until the Permanent Building Committee approves the last bill for payment, which happened on Thursday. So that's an exciting milestone. I really want to recognize both the police and fire departments for their work in it, but also the great work of the members of the Permanent Building Committee. I mean, that is a, a hardworking group, you know, particularly the individuals Chip Tarbell and Phil Renzi, who were kind of the subcommittee working on the building itself. They were really in that building every week and was an exceptional work and they did a great job. So thank you to them. And then finally, just a reminder to folks here as well as the public that we'll be kicking off our fiscal year 2025 budget season with the tri-board meeting next week. That will be online, on, on Zoom virtually. We're a much too, much too big of a group to kind of meet in one room. But I, I always find that to be an educational meeting. I hope, I hope everyone's able to attend and ask good questions as well. So with that, we'll move to item number 14. My understanding, Mr. Mayo, is we do have one small item for matters not anticipated.
Maybe not, maybe not that small, but I would like the board to set the tax classification hearing for November 13th at 7:15, where we will set the tax rate for the fiscal year.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries 70. Any other matters not anticipated?
I do actually have one. I had the opportunity to speak with the head of the Chamber of Commerce in relation to the Economic Development Council applications that we have, and there had been some confusion on their end in terms of who is eligible to apply for that. The current deadline is set for the 20th, which is this Friday. We don't even have, we don't have at this point applications for every slot that's even available. So I would like to make a motion that we just extend that deadline for, for two weeks to November 3rd, which would then allow for the Chamber of Commerce to be able to do further outreach as well, which I think would be important because there was, again, some confusion about who could and could not apply. So if that, so if I can get a second.
Sure. Second? Any discussion? So the motion is, sorry, November 3rd, you mentioned?
Friday, Friday, November 3rd. So just adding two more weeks.
Got it. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other matters not anticipated? No, seeing none. All right. Item number 15, adjournment. So our next meeting is November 13th at 7:00 PM, again, after the tri-board meeting next Thursday. We may do an executive session that night, so we will let everyone know if we, if we do need to meet a little bit earlier for that. Until then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
I'm going to assume no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. Good night. Thank you for bearing with us tonight on a, on a late evening and have a great night, Wakefield.